Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, January 25th, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. If you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Beerman.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Ms. DePaine.
Here.
Ms. Fabiano.
Here.
Ms. Ratner.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tufano.
Here.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 20th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. As we have changed our flow of our meetings, we're doing our closed session now early at 6:30. Be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: Discussion regarding MTSAA negotiations, confidential personnel matter, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will be going into closed session now, and we should be out by 7:15 to resume with the open portion of our meeting. Thank you. Okay. We're going to come back into the public session. We have a resolution coming out of our closed session. It is recommended that the members of the Board of Education approve the previously submitted memorandum of agreement between the Monroe Township School Administrators Association and the Monroe Township Board of Education for the period of July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2027. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
So moved.
Is there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Ms. Fabiano? Ms. Ratner?
Recused.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the Public Board of Education Minutes from December 14, 2022? Mr. Tufano made a motion and seconded by Ms. Bora. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes? Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as written?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from December 14, 2022? Moved by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Fabiano. Any questions or comments, changes, seeing none? Okay, all those in favor of approving them as written?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals?
Recused on the portion pertaining to MTSAA negotiations.
All right, so noted. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our Student Board Members' Report. We have our, one of our board members here tonight, Mr. Ladapauli.
Over at the middle school, during January 12th, their band performed at their winter concert. During January 17th, their jazz band concert was held to a packed house led by Mr. Yale, Ms. Vinagra, and Mr. Ratner. On July 20th, their sixth grade would play the best birthday party ever, and that would be held in front of a packed house led by Ms. Constantino. And their science Olympia team finished fifth out of their 15 teams in a recent competition. Over at Woodland, the Woodland Advanced Band and Core students performed a winter concert for both parents and students. Ms. Hyer, the arts teacher, and Ms. Dusselwicks, the media center coordinator, put together a make marker space project. This project is from author Grace Lynn in honor of Lunar New Year, and students would use this instruction sheet or watch a video to make an origami paper-cut rabbit for the year of the rabbit in preparation of the school-wide Scripps Spelling Bee. That's going to be scheduled during sometime in February. Homeroom classes are conducting classroom individual spelling bees. The Woodland Global Cause sponsored by the Student Council is their way of helping the world through recycling, reducing the use of one-time and using plastics, and keeping plastic out of oceans to protect ocean animals. And the Student Council sponsored a breast cancer tee-shirt sale before the holidays, raising $1,025 towards the Mama Mare Breast Cancer Foundation. Over at Oak Tree, on January 3rd, the Bus Safety Assembly was for all students. On the 23rd and 24th, the Kids Heart Challenge kickoff raised over $6,000 since Monday. And on the 27th, the Laugh Factory Assembly will do shows, and that will be sponsored by the PTA. And in the future, for February 2nd, the Hour Code Night will be both held in person and virtually for Grade 3 students as well as their parents. Dental visits will occur during the month of February for National Dental Month. The Parent Portal for Conferences opens on February 8, and the Schoolwide Olympics is on February 10. Over at Mill Lake, the Mill Lake students and staff have been busy the first month of their new year. In early January, Doug Amag, a historical interpreter, came to Mill Lake School to work with their third grade. He facilitated an engaging discussion reflecting on events in history, and everyone truly enjoyed. On January 24th, the students dedicated their Mill Lake Rock Garden and paraded and took photos with the owner of the Garden State Landscaping Company, who had donated several large boulders that anchored the Mill Lake's garden. And along with Mr. Yatsko, who contributed to the garden, a special shout-out to Director Selby, who also participated. The Rock Garden will promote positivity and collaboration, and within that collaboration, they'll also be expressing their Be Kind campaign. And lastly, Mill Lake, they had a nice visit from their new Board of Education members, who toured the building and met the students and staff, and they truly appreciate our interest in the school. And at Brookside, the students are doing great at Brookside. A few events that they would like me to note is, they held a Winter STEM Day for all fourth graders on January 6th. The students worked collaboratively to program, solve, brainstorm, and execute a plan and reflect with their peers. Classroom spelling bees were held on January 19th, and the school-wide spelling bee is scheduled as of now for February 10, and the second marking period will end on February 3rd. Over at Barclaybrook, they emphasized the importance of social and emotional learning in all aspects of their day. Classroom teachers and special area teachers were asked to identify one student who consistently demonstrated great behavior this past trimester, and they had an assembly before winter break where the great winners were announced and honored. One of the most wonderful aspects of this assembly was the way in which all the students cheered and celebrated for the great kid winners, being really supportive, and they were truly excited for their classmates who were nominated. This also reinforced that all students are truly great kids. Barclaybrook students all participated in the Hour of Coding December, which is a global initiative to promote computer science awareness in students all over the world. Over the course of the week, each class at Barclaybrook School participated in an hour of coding activities that promoted logic and analytical thinking and problem-solving, and the students had a lot of fun doing that. At Applegard, lastly, various classroom activities were held to honor the life of MLK Jr., including goal-setting activities, a skit of a lunch sit-in, read alouds, and et cetera. One of our students, Nikita Ganesh Pandey, is leading a student-driven initiative to build awareness of climate issues. Nikita is organizing a shark tank activity for the school in which students will create a business plan for products that will help preserve our environment. Students' teams will also pitch in order to have a room full of sharks. Our classroom competitions are underway for the annual spelling bee. The school-wide competition is coming up on February 17th as of scheduled now. The Student Council has also initiated an activity with snowflakes on each of the classrooms' doors of all of their rooms, and the snowflakes are decorated with students' ideas of how they can help their peers as well as their own self-esteem. On Tuesday, January 24th, yesterday, our Unified Friends from the high school enjoyed an activity-filled afternoon with the Unified Team here at Applegard. And the Principal's Book Club will be held via Zoom at 4:00 PM. This month's book is The Watsons Go to Birmingham in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. And Ms. Fleischer and Ms. Ebehart, our physical education teachers over at Applegard, are kicking off the Kids Heart Challenge with their classes, many thanks to the families that have already donated. And Applegard thanks their PTA that arranged a unique game show this month, and the students had a great time with this interactive assembly.
Great. Thank you very much for your detailed report. We have so much going on in our schools, it's so wonderful, and our board members don't always get to hear everything that's going on, so I appreciate your very detailed report and sharing that here this evening. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda are our presentations. We have one this evening from DI Group. We have Mr. Rich Alderiso here with us this evening to give us a presentation on our upcoming referendum. Mr. Alderiso, welcome.
And we do have copies for members of the public, and I know we're getting a hard copy right now that's going to be handed to us as well, so we can follow along.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're presenting here various additions and alterations to several of the district schools as part of the proposed referendum project. Those include the Applegarth Elementary School, the middle school, and the high school. So we will start here, just looking at the Applegarth Elementary School. We'll start by going through each school, looking at some of the schematic plans of each, and then go through the project financials, some of the program advantages, and some of the strategy related to consolidating Oak Tree and Applegarth to address building capacity needs. So this is an aerial view of Applegarth. If you're familiar with the building, you know there are several additions and an existing wing from 1936, an addition from 1960, from 1979 and 1983. The work here includes and involves addition, about a 30,000-square-foot addition to the building along with total renovations to the other wings. So if you look to the, let's see if I can point here, to the north side of the site, you see the proposed addition, which comes off of the existing wing here, creates a courtyard, and again, approximately 30,000 square foot of addition, which will provide 12 new classrooms for special ed classrooms, a new cafeteria and full-service kitchen, storage space, and some admin space for that wing. And there'll be some modifications to the existing footprint and alterations to the 1936 wing where we're removing the cafeteria to create more classroom space, to really maximize that space, and also to try to make the most use, the best use of some underutilized space, which are locker rooms in the building which are unused, will be adding a music room and a workroom. Also quite a bit of site work associated with this would be enlarging the visitor and staff parking, adding a staff parking lot, and then adding a bus loop and bus parking to accommodate 40-plus buses. The, really, what we're trying to do here with this building, as you kind of go from, if I back up a slide, as you go from the south side of this site to the north side of the site, you have the oldest wing, which is from 1936, and then the 60s wing, and then what we're proposing here. And really, what we're trying to do with the addition is, it's almost like a timeline. We're just trying to create a kind of a 21st version, a 21st-century version of a pretty modest classroom addition that is sensitive to that existing architecture, the 36th wing, the scale of it, some of the rhythm and punctuation of the building, and then just some tie-in with material. But at the same time, we're trying to create a more efficient building skin, a more efficient building envelope, better systems, better lighting, more, better use of daylighting. But again, at the same time, trying to keep the scale, this is a view really from the north side of the site at the addition, trying to keep the scale of that in keeping with what is there, being sympathetic to what exists there. Again, by virtue of the addition, we would be creating an enclosed courtyard, which could be used for outdoor learning space, play area, a combination of them. In addition to, along with the building addition to accommodate on how students, we're also looking at major renovations and rehab work to the existing facilities. We're looking at new roof systems, window and door replacements, more efficient windows, more secured doors, new HVAC systems, including high-efficiency boilers, electric service upgrade, backup power generator, upgrades to the fire suppression system. We'd be making barrier-free upgrades for handicapped accessibility, improvements to the communication, you know, the public address system and security upgrades. Again, the site improvements associated with parking, drainage, that new courtyard, and again, also taking those locker rooms, which are really underutilized, and trying to make those existing spaces really work hard for us. And that is, that is pretty much the extent of the work at Applegarth. We'll look a little bit towards the end of this at the relationship of Applegarth and Oak Tree. Over at the middle school, not unlike Applegarth, you have, you know, an existing building with several additions on it, the Performing Arts Center, several additions around the athletic core, if you will. There was a science wing that was added back when this was the high school. This is Prineville Road, and you can see this very kind of odd parking lot here, and then the drive, which is currently used for parent drop-off, student drop-off by parents. Similarly, we're looking at an addition and some renovations, alterations to this school. Basically, a two-story, 37,000-square-foot addition to the building here, which would include a satellite cafeteria as an outgrowth to the existing, 13 classroom spaces, and a relocated admin wing, which will allow us to really, I think, create a better working plan here, create classrooms where the existing admin wing is, create a more celebrated and a more logical entrance, and really try to keep this plan as compact as it can be. We looked at a variety of different locations for additions, but we're really trying to attempt to keep the plan simple, compact, very logical and easy to navigate for the students. In addition to this, we're, again, quite a bit of site work in that we're increasing the visitor and staff lot, creating bus drop-off and parking for buses that, again, probably will accommodate about 45 buses, 12 mini-buses, and then all of the traffic and circulation associated with that work. If you're familiar with the facade of the building, which I'm sure everyone is, you know, it's a very kind of, it's a very typical kind of 60s, 70s facade, brick, very kind of simple rhythm, but it's a bit dated, and there's a lot of work that really needs to occur to this exterior facade. And one of the things that we collectively discussed was really trying to give this a facelift, make the addition here almost look like a new building, create a new identity, again, something that really will keep students excited and faculty and staff excited about this building. And we're really trying to, again, take a good look at how to better organize the building, have an entrance that really makes sense, an admin wing on the first level that really is adjacent to that entrance, and just really take a good look at circulation. Instead of adding a cafeteria that's, you know, on the other side of the building, we're really trying to expand the cafeteria that is there. So again, travel and circulation and navigating the corridors of this school are really something that, you know, I think we can improve. And again, just trying to create something here that is more academic, that excites middle schoolers and really, you know, gets them thinking about school and moving on to a great high school, and just really providing the best, you know, space for middle schoolers that we possibly can here. And again, the addition, you know, we look at this with an eye towards creating a very efficient building envelope, good systems, good lighting, good windows, very good HVAC systems with an eye towards efficiency and longevity and really sustainable equipment. And just another view by virtue of the addition, this is the, this is the back of the addition. We'd be creating another outdoor space, an enclosed outdoor space, which again could be used for outdoor learning, eating outside, a variety of, variety of things. Over at the high school, looking at a series of smaller additions at the high school. If you're familiar with the high school plan, this is Schoolhouse Road, Prineville. And looking at a small addition off of this side of the building, which is adjacent to the art wing, an addition near the exterior of the back, which would sit under an overhang, so it would be really an infill of outdoor space currently. And then we're looking at modifying the existing fitness facility to generate classroom space and create a more efficient fitness facility off of the back of that. In total, it would be a 17-classroom addition, several small group instructional spaces. I think we're showing, we have four classrooms here, six over here, and seven over here, and again, the fitness space over here. And again, I, you know, when you, it's a newer school, as everyone knows, and really, I think what we try to do when we put small additions on a school this large is we really try to make them look aesthetically like they've always been there. We just want these to blend in, we want them to work well with circulation, work well with existing spaces, and not look like appendages to the building. We really want these to just kind of work well. You know, one of the nice things about this, this work is that a lot of this work can be done with minimal disturbance to the existing building. They're less invasive-type additions, so it really begins to make a lot of sense to add these very small additions. They look so small because the building is so large, but again, we'd be gaining 17 classrooms in total. And again, just trying to create something that is rhythmically in keeping with what's there. We're showing this as a brick construct right now, but it could be, there's a lot of metal on this building. It could be metal, it could be brick, it could be a combination of those materials. But again, very, anything that we do here that's new, we're looking for efficiency, sustainability, and facilities that are easy to maintain. As far as schedule, so we've outlined some milestones here, which I don't know if you could read that from where you are, I know I can't. But I'll just try to take you through this quickly. So the referendum date is mid-March, as I believe you know. The way this process would work, we, just to kind of go through these item by item very quickly, between March and April, should the referendum pass, we would engage the engineering team to, that would complete the design of these structural engineer, HVAC, geotechnical. There'd be some soil boring works, some geotechnical work that would occur between March and May to really take a good look at the suitability of soil around the various buildings and around the various locations for proposed additions. Various applications would be made between May and August to the different utility companies, PSE&amp;G, JCPN, to plan for new and upgraded utility services. We also are required to apply to the Freehold Soil Conservation District. Anytime you, there's a land disturbance of a certain size, you're required to go to that agency in New Jersey, and they make sure that things such as soil erosion and controls during construction are carefully monitored. By about August, we would be submitting about 30% preliminary design drawings. In December, we'd be submitting, we'd be looking to submit 65% complete drawings. Those same drawings would go back to the Department of Education for what they call Final Educational Adequacy Review. And basically, the purpose of that is that the DOE, the Department of Ed, makes sure that as the construction documents are developed, they don't deviate too, too much from the drawings which they have already reviewed for schematic design. So the Department of Ed reviews all of these plans for educational adequacy, and as the process goes on, they want to make sure that nothing changes drastically. By about May of 2024, projects would be advertised for bid with an eye towards awarding in July of 2024. The construction duration, we're hoping by the time this all occurs, construction, things could, you know, material is more accessible, more available, and these projects probably be on a 24-month track for construction with an occupancy date towards September of '26. Shari, were you going to present these, or?
Sure. So I think it's important to note to the public that in addition to three physical buildings that are being renovated and/or added on to with additions, middle school, high school, and Applegarth School, it also is going to affect programming, because by moving the third grade out of Oak Tree in a few years from now with the addition to put them into Applegarth, that will allow programs, I'm not going to read from this, I'm just going to say it the way I know it, it's going to allow programs that we currently have on the other side of town. So because of lack of space, we have current special education programs that are placed in Mill Lake, Woodland, Barclaybrook, or Brookside that really belong in the home school on this side of town, but because of space, that is not possible. So once we move the third grade over, that would alleviate the utilization of current classrooms that are being utilized for the third grade, and it would allow the special education programs to come back to what we call their home schools in the sister-school concept. Additionally, with the reallocation of space within the high school with the 17 additional classrooms, it will give us an opportunity to expand upon the related arts program, robotics, and so on and so forth. If you have a copy either in front of you, or you can read it, so I'm not going to read it to you. I think it is important to understand that when we talk about services, we always look for enrichment as well as remedial, and space is an issue. for enrichment as well as remedial, and space is an issue. Space is an absolute issue. In order for us to expand programs, you need to have a place where you put the children. So I think it's important as we all come together and make decisions regarding the March fourteenth referendum that we understand that it really is a team effort. It's not just, well, I live in Applegoth, I live in the Applegoth area, I live in the Oak Tree area, this is where I live, it doesn't affect me. It really does affect everyone because every time we have an opportunity to stretch out the children into other locations, it gives us another opportunity to bring other programs back. So that is why we consider it an all-in project.
So how much will the project cost? The referendum amount that we will vote on has a cost of one hundred and three million six hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and three dollars. The debt service aid is anticipated in the amount of seventeen million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven thirty-five. The net project cost after the debt service aid is eighty-six million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand four sixty-eight, and the average annual tax impact for every one hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation would be sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. And just to note, the average assessed valuation is three hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. If you visit our referendum website, there is additional information, and there is a tax calculator so that you could just plug in your assessed valuation, not your market value, but your assessed valuation, and it will come up with the tax, the annual tax for this project.
Just to reiterate, I kind of talked about it in the previous slide. So as you know, we're a sister school concept here. It's something that is unique to Monroe. Many school districts do not do it. Going to do, school districts around us, they have K-8 sometimes, they have K-5 buildings, some have K-6 buildings, but sister school is something that we've kept up with. It would be lovely if we had Woodland and Mill Lake within walking distance, like we do the other schools. We do not, but it is as closest to a sister concept as we can get, and by doing what we'd like to do here in Applegoth and adding on, not just refurbishing or renewing Applegoth, we're able to take the third grade out of Oak Tree, place it into Applegoth, which will be our new and approved building. And once again, as I said earlier, it would really allow programming to be where it should be. Currently, as I've said before, we do have special education programs that are in buildings across town. Those children's home school are on our side of Applegoth and Oak Tree, and they sit on a bus for a minimum of an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes, sometimes an hour and thirty minutes. And at this juncture, there's nothing we could do about that because we do not have the space to house them in their home school. So they are bused across town. So that's one of the things that we're excited about when we have the opportunity with the expansion of the classrooms to move the third grade over to Applegoth.
So you're really solving two problems with that one addition and the work at Applegoth. I believe that's the extent of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alderiso.
Before we move on, if board members have any questions for Mr. Alderiso or Mrs. Chanley?
I have a question. Generally, how long does it take?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Ratner had her hand up first.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So I just have a couple of questions. The first was, I know that the high school additions seem relatively, they don't really affect the building as much for the middle school and for Applegoth. Will the construction be taking place during learning time, and will they be affected by the renovations and additions during that time?
So the construction duration would be continuous. We would try to take advantage of as many summers as we could and as little school year as possible, but the work would occur during the day. We try to manage that so that certain construction activities are either isolated or occur at evenings or after hours or before school begins, things that may make noise, may make dust, may be disruptive. But yes, the school would be aware of the construction work, even at the high school, even here. It's just that, you know, we try to minimize the amount of time the contractors and work takes place within the school footprint, the existing school footprint itself during construction. But that's got to be managed, everything, separating contractors and students, you know, contractor entrance sites, parking, all of those things logistically have to be very carefully planned.
Okay. My next question, I saw that there's an additional, I think it's cafeteria, being added to the middle school, and Applegoth, it's being enlarged, I believe. However, for some of the other more common spaces, the libraries, the gymnasium, art rooms, things of that nature that multiple classes use, is this going to be able to accommodate the additional student growth in population? Because with, I guess, twelve general education classrooms and four special education classrooms, that would be an additional, you know, up to an additional sixteen classrooms that would be there that would then have to be utilizing that space as well?
Sure. So the middle school would have the enlargement of the existing cafeteria, Applegoth would receive a new cafeteria kitchen on those. And it really, you know, those seem to be the spaces that are most sorely affected right now, the cafeteria space. Over at the middle school, we've actually made that library smaller, that core space smaller to add classroom space, and it seems to work very well. It was just that there was unutilized space there, and the district did a really great job taking advantage of that. I think we've added maybe four classrooms. You net almost a hundred students just in that space alone. Some of the other core spaces, you know, you probably may not even realize now you suffer from some of those programs not, you know, some of those programs maybe have to occur on carts or only at one point during a day instead of maybe scheduled three times a day because you need those rooms as general education classrooms. I think this will help alleviate some of the needs there with some of those other core spaces.
I think the gymnasium might be like my largest concern is I know that's the state requirement, and it's obviously harder to move gym as opposed to some of the other special subject areas. I wasn't sure if they, it would be able to be divided because of the increase in population, how that was being addressed.
I think largely a lot of that could be handled to some extent with scheduling.
I was just going to say that. If I may add, the way it works is so currently at the middle school, when they schedule the students, they schedule them in such a fashion depending on the needs and the number and the large number of students in the classes because they also have health. So it schedules equally out, you never really have a problem. The gym is more than sufficient to handle that, especially because we have an auxiliary gym, and then we have an outside cardio as well. In the Applegoth, and I don't know if Dr. Lehman wants to interject if he feels he could expand more, I know that it's a scheduling thing. So you have library time in the related arts, you have library, you have music and so forth. So it would be my understanding that regardless of the number of students, you would have a schedule which would then allow the children to participate in those activities. I think what Mr. Alderiso was trying to say, I'm just going to sum it up, is that currently, when the library is needed, the library is taken away for class instruction because we need more classrooms. By putting on these additions and making the conversions, you will no longer have that situation. So then library can then be properly scheduled, especially in the elementary school, to be utilized only for library time. Does that make sense, Dr. Lehman?
I was going to say I have two other questions. I can ask them both at once. The others were, aside from the special education students going back to their home schools, which I think is fantastic, will other elementary school students potentially be redistricted as well to other schools? And then the last thing was just, I know that it mentioned we'd get approximately seventeen million dollars in state aid. Is there something that could change where we may not get that anticipated amount?
At this juncture, at this juncture, I'm going to be very careful, at this present time, we are not having conversations about redistricting. That doesn't mean the conversations could occur, but at this time, that is not part of the conversation. Regarding the financial, I'm going to acquiesce to Ms. Allen just to confirm.
I am not aware of anything that, where we wouldn't get the state aid that we're expecting.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I have a question regarding the project schedule. The preliminary drawings that are going to get sent back to the NGA DOE for further approval, approximately how long do they take to get back with that, generally speaking?
We're anticipating about a month for that review. And we actually, we continue developing the construction documents during that month. Their comments are normally very innocuous, they're not severe. You know, they'll ask about something that's changed, you know, you're showing more parking spots, less parking spots, but it's almost like a checkbox with the Department of Ed.
Okay, I thought it would take longer. That's good, a month.
Mr. Stefano, here's your hand up.
I have a, I have one question. On the middle school additions, you have two additions in the forward after the building, correct?
One addition.
One addition, and then you have a courtyard in between the two, right? Do you know what the square footage of that courtyard would be?
I don't offhand, but I could definitely figure that out.
Say it's large or is it small?
It's sizable, it's probably thirty foot wide by the, maybe eighty, ninety foot?
I'm just asking because we, in that particular school, I believe that parking, especially with after-school events, very scarce, there's not a lot of spots there. And by putting in that courtyard, I feel you're going to be taking away more spots because the addition's going to take up some of the parking lot, correct?
The addition encroaches on the existing drive, but not the parking lot.
Okay, so right up to the sidewalk, right up to the curb, basically?
Plus minus. We're definitely gaining spots.
Is there a reason, besides aesthetics, is there any other reason that you would put that courtyard in?
Yeah, actually, it's code driven.
Okay, that's why I want to know.
Yeah, if you're able to separate those buildings by a certain distance, you don't require a firewall between the two buildings, which firewall is very expensive, they're difficult to build. They would cover all of the windows on the existing building. So that courtyard really helps us out quite a bit on the code side.
That's what I want to know about the firewall. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Ms. Bora?
Mrs. Kirby, I actually had asked this question in the BGT meeting last year when you presented, but I'm going to ask you that again just so that the public can also hear that. My concern, like Ms. Ratner had said at that time, was also construction while school is in session, but I was reassured by the fact that you've done this in the past. Would you be kind enough to share that experience that your firm has with constructing, I think right here in East Brunswick while the school was in session?
Yeah, we've done various renovations. We renovated a high school in Middlesex County. It was a total renovation, windows, air conditioning, new chiller, new heat, asbestos abatement, flooring finishes, renovation of five science labs, media center, new auditorium, gymnasium, a total, total renovation occurred over two summers and one school year. We worked very closely with the code official. They let us, they allowed us to do certain things that really made that process go well. They did not miss a day of school during that. Thankfully, no incidents. It's not a perfect process. We had to teach contractors how to navigate lockdown drills and all of those things, but it's doable. It's doable. If you reserved this work to just summers, it would take you ten years to do it. So it's just very careful, careful management.
Ms. Fabiana?
So I just have a question along those lines also. So with regards to Applegoth, because it's a pretty extensive renovation, sorry, we're having a pretty extensive renovation done to Applegoth, will the students still be in school while all of those renovations are happening, or are there plans to get trailers or something in there? Just I'm concerned about having them in there with the types of renovations that we need to do in that building.
We've made accommodations in that project budget and submission to the Department of Education for temporary space as needed during some of that work or maybe all of the renovation work.
Anybody else have any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Alderiso. We appreciate this. And again, this was a presentation that has previously been made to the board and extensive conversations throughout the last two years at BG and T meetings. I know the administration thought it was worthwhile to have it come back to us tonight, and we thank Mr. Alderiso for coming and doing that again for us so that members of the board as well as the public has seen it multiple times now. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda are committee reports. Any committee chair wishing to give a report? Mr. Stefano?
January eighteenth, the BG and T committee met. Item number one on the agenda was the Eagle Scout presentation for Brookside School. Eagle Scout candidate and current Monroe Township High School student Ryan, I'm going to say it right, Kacharzik, presented a proposed project to construct a vegetable wash station and revitalize the student garden at Brookside School. The committee members and the administration were highly complimentary of the proposal, and his efforts were awarded, and we offered him full support for his project. Second item on the agenda was the district grounds care contract bid. The committee reviewed a draft bid tabulation. Legal counsel is currently analyzing the bids for compliance. The committee noted that if the lowest responsible bid is deemed acceptable by legal counsel and recommendations for award would be made at the upcoming board meeting. I don't know if Mr. Tagg wants to inform the board if legal counsel went through it, and the answer is yes to that question. Legal counsel has gone through it, and I believe that they're all in compliance. So that bid, if we vote on it tonight, would be accepted. Number three was the Applegoth roof. Been hearing about this for many, many years, unfortunately. Administration provided an overview of the current condition of our four major roof sections, nineteen thirty-six, nineteen sixty section, the nineteen seventy-nine section, and the nineteen eighty-three section of roof, and highlighted current leaking condition, I'm sorry, highlighted current leak conditions at the nineteen sixty wing. Recognizing that the roofs, all of which are out of warranty, must be replaced regardless of whether or not forthcoming referendum passes, the committee supports administration, the committee supported administrators' recommendation to begin design now for the nineteen thirty-six, nineteen sixty, and nineteen seventy-nine sections. If the referendum passes, those funds will cover the cost. If the referendum fails, the board will consider allocating funds from the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four operation, operating budget towards the roof replacement projects. And that was it.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stefano? Okay, any other committee chairs wishing to give a report? Mrs. Belko?
So on January nineteenth, we held the curriculum, co-curricular and sports committee. All the supervisors of the district were in attendance as well as the board, the board members on the committee, which was myself, Ms. Bora, Mrs. Kirby, and Ms. Alvarez. We had four items up for discussion. The first one was presented by Dr. Lehman, which is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. And this is something that is not, it's not the school shootings, it's not those things. This is about assessing, doing an assessment on students for behavioral issues and making sure that we are catching these things before they become an issue. And each school is going to have their own threat assessment team, and they'll be trained. It's a two-part training that they'll receive, they'll do e-learning modules, and then there's a live online workshop where they'll be facilitated in practice scenarios so that they can practice what they've learned in the elearnings to put it into work. So it would be a student who maybe is escalating, you know, is maybe acting out, and then we move a little bit from acting out to something a little bit more noticeable, undesirable behaviors to other things. And then this allows the threat assessment team to refer, to be referred to, and then they can work with the child and get things moving. So that is also part of the, this is part of the legislation that has come out from the state. We're being proactive about getting this training now and getting our teachers trained so that we can be ahead of the curve when the law goes into effect for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. The next thing that was discussed was a professional development by Dr. Rickamini for math and science teachers for the middle school and the high school focusing on special education teachers and educators. This particular program was already offered to the gen ed student, to the gen ed teachers, and that they were able to turnkey all and that they were able to turnkey all they learned from, you know, the last day of their class, they were able to go to school that next week and use the tools that they were taught. And this is the expectation with this group of students. There's going to be thirty-two students, thirty-two teachers who are going to attend this program. It's a three-day program commencing in February. I don't have the exact dates, but it's there. So the next thing we talked about was a Linkit pilot. Linkit is a data warehouse, as well as has analytics and an intervention manager. So the analytics would be very helpful so that our teachers aren't doing their own data mining in this particular program with input from Genesis and from others, you know, grades and scores. The teachers will be able to see all the scores and be able to make, you know, recommendations and look across at where we are with the students and what their levels are. This is very rudimentary that I'm explaining. Please go out and read the, and view the curriculum committee meeting. And then the other piece of it is the intervention. And my notes here are a little bit better than what I have there. So the response to intervention piece is that we can track if students are on an education plan where they weren't doing well, and so now we've put in some additional help and additional services for them. We'll be able to better track whether or not those interventions were responsive and the students were able to do better. And if they're not, course correct in the middle of this response or this intervention that we've made and go in a different direction. And it allows us to track that a little bit easier than we're able to track it now. So that is a six-month free pilot that we'll be engaging in, and then I, we'll get a report back from the supervisors and administration as to whether or not we should move forward with something like this for, you know, for us to pay for, which we'll also be looking at software that we'll no longer need because we have this. So it'll come up during the times when we're looking at all of the software renewals, which happens a little bit later on in the year. So we'll do that. We also had a presentation from Dr. Higgins at the high school in reference to the update on scheduling and course selection process at the high school. It's already begun. Teachers have made their recommendations. Parents will be able to go in shortly to look at the schedules and talk about it. They'll come in with their students and make decisions. The ultimate thing that's going to happen this year, which has not happened in the past, is students will be getting their schedules earlier in August as opposed to waiting till August twenty-ninth for theirs, because we do have, we'll have staff available to be able to work through the, any corrections or things that they need to do. The both, there's two items from the curriculum committee that are on for the board to approve tonight. The cost for the CS tag, which is the comprehensive, God, I missed it, I'm a little low on here, comprehensive training for threat assessment, and then also the Dr. Rickamini professional development, eighty-four fifty, and then four thousand, for a total of twelve thousand for the professional development for the math and science for the special ed teachers.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko?
I just had one question. And thank you for sending the summary, by the way, Ms. Belko. It was appreciated. Regarding the threat assessment team, I was just curious how that affects the INRS, which I know the, it's Intervention and Referral Services, and then, you know, RTI, which is Response Intervention, how this works in regards to that? Because I know with INRS, you can also look at behavioral issues, social issues, so I was curious how this sort of pertains to that.
Yep, so the threat assessment teams, I would say they are more, they are broader in terms of their application. So you'd be looking in the RTI process at behavioral interventions that would be specific, probably six, eight, ten-week interventions in looking for improvement, as opposed to the threat assessment team's role is broader, it's kind of school-based, and they will be kind of, they will be looking at, I would say, students that may not fit through that RTI process. Again, I'm trying to speak in generalities because we're going to put this together before we need to have it in place in July. But that's, think of the threat assessment team almost as our school, as we have a school safety team as well, kind of in a similar role. That's a global kind of piece that may look at specific cases every once in a while. Then you have the RTI process, which is classroom teacher, that student's classroom teacher or teachers, a child study team member and things that are really trying to put things in place. Those members will be on the threat assessment team. They're being trained in this model. We have a suicide screening model as well, so this threat assessment piece is another screening tool for us. Again, another tool in their toolbox. But they kind of, that RTI and the threat assessment team kind of operate separately from each other. There may be an overlap. The kids may go back and forth, but they're not going to run concurrent.
Anybody else? Any other chairs wishing to give a committee report? Ms. Fabiano?
The Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee met on Wednesday, January eighteenth at six PM here in the media center. President or myself, Ms. Ratner, and Ms. Spearman, and Ms. Chanley, and Dr. Lehman from administration. We talked about the communication being set forth regarding the upcoming referendum. There will be events held at Applegarth and Milllake Schools in March, pamphlets that are being created. Administration has reached out to the HOAs in our community, and a date has been set with the League of Women Voters, and we talked about the possibility of having banners placed at each school. We also discussed maintaining a running list of questions from the public, along with answers to be kept on the referendum website. The committee also discussed making the district website more active and using social media scheduling app, and possibly having each school have something to share on the website. It was also discussed having a widget, kind of sharing of like a live stream of social media activity within the district pages. And lastly, we discussed, since this is now the Legislative Action Committee, we discussed how to move ahead with discussions regarding upcoming legislature. And being that it is the start of the new legislative session, we will be watching for any upcoming items that will be relevant to our district.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiana?
I just had a comment. I missed being on that committee, and I'm really excited that we have a legislative portion on that. There were quite a few on the agenda. You went through it really fast, but they were all very informative, so thank you.
Any other chairs wishing to give a report? Mrs. Spearman, sorry.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, January nineteenth. The November twenty-twenty-two attorney invoices were twenty-one thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars sixty-six cents. We're continuing to lessen our dependency on the attorneys for the Oprah category and seeing a larger contribution from labor negotiations and other special defense matters. The bill list was reviewed and presented for approval at one million two hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars forty-one cents, with an addendum of an additional one million six hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars ninety-nine cents. The addendum was larger than typical due to the closure of the business office during the winter break. Committee confirmed review and oversight to the bill list and recommend the full board to accept. Ms. Allen provided the next milestones for the audit cycle. The audit is due to the state currently on March seventeen. The board should anticipate the receipt and presentation of the finalized annual comprehensive financial report for either the February fifteenth or the March fifteenth board meeting. Ms. Allen provided an update on the budget cycle. The state program has been released, so she will begin input of the data to reflect budgetary revenue and expenditure elements as we track toward a balanced budget. Defense rounds have been completed, and meetings will now begin to make adjustments to move toward a preliminary budget presentation for the March board meeting. Referendum update. Ms. Allen prepared information on the financial aspects of the referendum. Please refer to the available video of the meeting for explanation on the calculations for tax impact and the bond referendum details. Also, she did a good job with definitions and details that were discussed concerning total bond referendum, eligible costs, how debt service is calculated and administered. There was also discussion about how there is some savings due to investment earnings on the proceeds until they are dispersed for the construction expenses. So again, good conversation there on the video. And Ms. Belko's already mentioned it, so I'll just gloss over it, but on the items carried over from the curriculum committee, the Finance Committee also agreed that it should be passed forward for full board approval, and they are item J and item L, probably under the Business Administrators Report, or on the Superintendent Board Actions, probably on Superintendent Board Action, item J and item L for the grant-funded twelve thousand dollars for the workshops for special education and the Navigate Three Sixty for the eight thousand four hundred fifty dollars for the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidance Training. And that concludes my finance report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Spearman? Are there any other committees?
The Personnel-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You wanted to Policy, please. Go to Policy, and then we'll go back to Personnel. Sorry.
All right. Policy Committee met on Thursday, January nineteenth also. On the agenda tonight for abolishment are the two main COVID, I guess they were Policies, sixteen forty-eight dot eleven and sixteen forty-eight dot thirteen, so that's come down from the state as being ready for abolishment. It only takes one reading on that, so when we vote on that tonight, those are gone, and that's mandated from the state. On the agenda for first read, we have a list. So you have oh one six one, the call, adjournment, and cancellation. Oh one six two, notice of board meetings. Anyone where I'm not giving any comment, either it's good to go to the videotape, or there is just no substantive changes from the state. A lot of it's just verbiage or whatever, so we go through the details at the committee level. At the presentation level here, really trying to just highlight the items where there's vote, or choice, or option that maybe needs to be deliberated or looked at further. We inserted Policy oh one six four, the conduct of board meeting. That is one of our bylaws. This has been updated to reflect the new order of business with the closed session at the beginning of the monthly board meeting. So you can see the changes that we inserted there. That will be for first read tonight. Policy and Regulation two four two three, bilingual and ESL education. That was Strauss S. Ming alerts. Policy and Regulation eight one forty, student enrollments and enrollment accounting. And that was a lot of just how things are reported to the state, changing verbiage. Apparently, the word pupil has become out of fashion and replaced with student throughout some of these policies, so some of the changes not so substantive, but more linguistic. Policy and Regulation eight three three oh, student records. And then a series of the security regulations, eighty-four twenty dot two, dot seven, and dot ten for bomb threats, lockdown procedures, and active shooter. Here, the state has pretty much told us that we're removing all of the details and specifics about any procedures and techniques, and just referring to the district security plan that is not part of public access. So those regulations have really been just stripped down to a version that, say, refer to the district security plan for the information. So please be sure to watch the committee meeting for discussion deliberation by the committee concerning these policies and recommendations. We have two other items that we discussed that don't present tonight on the agenda for any kind of action, but just so the full board is aware. We have Policy oh one five two, Board Officers, which is a bylaw. We're going to bring that back to the committee in February. Ms. Kirby requested to get some attorney advice on the flexibility we have to define the mechanics of a paper ballot vote. So the committee will continue to discuss the options at the February meeting and return to the full board for a recommendation for impact to the policy for the election of Board Officers. So on this one, the state is pretty much giving us some flexibility on whether we vote through roll call or a paper ballot. We can make a choice at the district level and insert it into our bylaws, and it also gives us the opportunity to choose an option of whether or not we're going to vote based on a majority of the full board or those present in a quorum conducting the meeting. So we have the option to choose there. I've polled all members of the board, taken in some feedback. We're discussing it at committee. Some questions came up during committee that we're going to get some attorney advice on, and so we're going to revisit this one in February and probably see it on the agenda next month for first read with whatever recommendations the committee can come up with. The other discussion was on Policy and Regulation fifty-two hundred for attendance. This one will also be brought back to the committee in February. There was one fill-in-the-blank that we missed at the committee level discussion to determine how many college visit days should maybe be allowed or are going to be allowed to be excused. So somewhere between three to five is the recommendation from the administration. We'll discuss it at committee level and come back with a recommendation. So that Policy and Regulation was suppressed from the agenda for this month, but will be back next month. And that concludes my report.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Spearman? Mrs. Fabiana?
With the abolishment of the COVID policy, does that mean there's no more COVID instruction or quarantine? How was that being handled?
So as of now, the reentry process and things still remains the same in terms of, you know, just come back when you're healthy. And in terms of home instruction and things like that, we have not kind of really finalized that, you know, so as of now, nothing's changing. We certainly need to take another look at that now that the policy is abolished. If that's something we want to do long-term, we have to make a decision, but as of now, you know, nothing's changing.
And if I'm correct, the policy didn't abolish the plan. It abolished just that policy. So we still have our COVID plan in place, but the policy was abolished.
Right, so the reason the policy is abolished is because we've been required to, starting at the beginning of the school year and even last year, have a COVID, you know, it's a remote school closure plan is what it is. Yep, it's not COVID-specific anymore.
And the plan would no longer make reference to any testing requirements for teachers because that's all been abolished by the state, right?
Correct, yep.
Ms. Ratner?
Just to follow up on what Mrs. Fabiana was mentioning, which I think everyone, can you give a cheer that it's being abolished, you know, it's great. But for abolishment, does that mean completely eliminated? Does it make it inactive? That if, you know, God forbid, this, God forbid, something happens and COVID returns, it can be reactivated? Like, I just wanted to get the definition of abolishment, if that makes sense.
Sure.
We'll take turns. So what it means is now we are required by the state, and we've already submitted our plan, and that's what I think he said at the end, that maybe we didn't grasp. So we have to have a emergency plan, regardless of what the situation is, that if we were out of school, so it doesn't make a difference if it was COVID or not COVID. So we don't even want to say COVID. I don't like to say the word, but if it was to become an epidemic level or status, we now have a plan of action for remote access. At this time, unless the board makes a decision to make any changes, similar to how you have a fever, you can return. You have to be fever-free twenty-four hours. So the, and I want to say it correctly because I don't want to be misquoted, so I'm not, I'm not sure because I always get confused between the health, I'm looking at the nurse, Ms. Belko over there, between the Health Department or the CDC, because we always went back and forth which one we were going by. You're supposed to be, depending upon the onset of the, onset of the symptoms, how it works, were you symptom-free, COVID-positive, but you had the symptoms earlier, so you could return, you count the days. So that is still, when a parent calls and says to a nurse, "My child has COVID," the nurse doesn't say, "Does your child have COVID?" It's when the parent says, "My child has COVID," the nurse then says, "Okay." When did they test positive? When did they have symptoms? Were they symptom-free? And they go through, "Well, now your child may return on." So it's very similar to strep throat fever. You have a system of dialogue between the nurse and the parent. When the parent acknowledges whatever the sickness is, parent calls and says, "My child is not feeling well. My child is out. Thank you very much. I hope your child is feeling better. Please send them to school when they're well." So I don't know if that really answers your question, but that's, that is how we've been moving along through the continuum of sickness, because everything's a sickness. I mean, you could have flu, same thing. So that, so as far as my understanding, the CDC and the Health Department, I'm going to say and/or, because I don't want to be quoted wrong, still says it's that sixth day. I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, and I think the question is even a little more general. So COVID policy, that policy's gone. It's abolished, means it's gone, because it's replaced by the plan we have to address anything that we can think of in the future. There's going to be things we, you know, may not think of that we need to address, but the remote plan would include anything from, if we had a temporary closing in a school, we could always pivot to this plan, and there's an action plan to get, you know, computers out to kids and all that stuff, or it could be the health-related piece again. So that's-
This is not something that can be reactivated by the state. It's completely abolished, not coming back. That's-
Anything could be reactivated by the state. If it comes down as a mandated policy, we would have to adopt it, so, I mean, yeah, it could be. All right, anybody have any other questions? Mr. Payne?
I just have a question to back up what Kate said. Is it also specifically set for the teachers too? Because I know my daughter had COVID where she is, and they told her when she had to come back. come back. Is it the same thing? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, and Ms. Bora, you want to give Personnel update?
The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, January 18th. The board members in attendance were myself, Ms. Spearman, Ms. Scott, Mr. Tofano, and Mrs. Kirby, who joined us remotely. Administrators in attendance were Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. We reviewed the current openings in the districts, which were approximately 48 due to medical and personal leaves, transfers, resignations, and retirements. We also had eight new positions posted. There was one exit survey, it was from the current Vice Principal of Oak Tree and Apple Garth School, Ms. Pam Amendola, who's leaving us for a principal position in another district, and we wish her all the best for this new role. She will be missed. Mrs. Chanley shared that they posted for this position for Vice Principal at Oak Tree Apple Garth immediately and received 95 applications, of which 18 were considered and eight were interviewed. Tonight on the agenda, there's a recommendation by the superintendent to fill this position with the most qualified and suitable candidate. Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman also interviewed to fill the newly approved position of Director of Innovative and Equity Programs, Community Relations, Partnerships, and Career Technology. Out of the 28 applications, three of which had previously interviewed and seven did not have relevant experience, six candidates were finally interviewed, and from the extremely talented pool, a recommendation from the superintendent of the best candidate is on the agenda tonight for our approval. There was a discussion on an urgent need for after-hours security at many of our school buildings that are being used for recreational purposes like sports, scouting, PDA events, et cetera. The administration has been pursuing a solution for this. We have many a times in the past recruited Monroe Township Police Department officers, which also comes at a cost. On the agenda tonight is a recommendation by the superintendent to approve four part-time security officers for six months, at the end of which this need will be revisited to see if we have adequate coverage or if we need more. The security personnel will be shared between all schools as needed and our after-hours, for after-hours and so part-time. The safety of our students, whether it's during school hours or after-hours in our buildings, is our responsibility as a board and administration and should never be taken lightly. That concludes the committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bora? Ms. Ratner?
Just one quick. First, I wanted to comment, thank you, Ms. Bora, for meeting with the members who were not present. That's something that I greatly appreciated, being kept in the loop on some things that were discussed. I was going to bring this up, I guess, during the recommendations, but since you had brought up the security officers, I actually had a committee member, which I think this is wonderful that we're doing, they had actually brought up the concerns about before-school security at the elementary schools as well with Falcon Care, if there are security officers present, you know, from the time that students start arriving. And to my knowledge, I did not believe so, but I was not positive. And once I had seen the recommendation for the after-hours security offers, I thought it might be a good time to bring that up.
So when we had our new Director of Security come on board, he started doing an examination as all new employees do, and they start looking at areas in which we could possibly grow the need for security. So presently, it was brought to our attention that there was no before or after-care security in our schools, and we wanted to do the best we could. So what we're doing right now is we're going to be changing some hours for the after-school, and then he's going to be bringing me a report of how we can make those hours fit with the four additional part-time to see where and when we need to accommodate before school. Additionally, that just handles our Falcon Care program, you know, ECE and so forth, you know, what used to be called wraparound. The other issue that has been brought to our attention when we went to the school boards, and I know you were there as well, and Ms. Fabiano went as well, and we went to a lot of really good sessions, they constantly tell you, even if it is not your program, it is your responsibility. Those schools belong to Monroe Township School District, and we have unbelievable activities in a positive way where our buildings are utilized. So that's going to be another possible increase of security that we might need. I currently have asked Mr. Chee, Secretary, who does a fabulous job, to do a project for me, and she's currently doing the project, to look at the utilization of our buildings at all levels by all different groups, the rec center, you know, cultural arts and so on and so forth, and look at the utilization, because they are currently tier-one, which means we don't currently charge them, which means when we don't charge them, I know we're all one, whether you pay taxes in the town or you pay taxes, you know, for the school board, but we're all one, and we need to really see, those buildings are open and rec is taking, rec is there. So even if we have our security there until 7:00, rec may go till 9:00. Well, what does that look like for us? What is the impact? What is the cost? And will these part-time security guards then become full-time and possibly rotate so that, I'm going to say 6:00 AM, 6:30 I believe it starts. 6:30 AM in the elementary school, we have an opening, you have someone there, but that affects the afternoon, because if someone's part-time, you have to follow the rules for part-time. So you're absolutely correct, and it's something that we do have our eye on. So as we continue to evaluate our needs, we will be coming back to Personnel for any of our needs. I do have to confer, of course, with Ms. Allen and Dr. Lehman to see where our needs are and also the cost, and, you know, if the money is there and what it looks like. So we're very excited to at least have these four part-time. So we're moving in the right direction, but it doesn't mean we're done by any means. Thank you for your comments.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, and I believe that concludes our committee reports. The next item on the agenda is our public forum for our agenda items only. If anybody wishing to address the board, please come up, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Ambika Sukla, Tucson Court. I'd like to talk about three things today. The first is the extension that is being proposed in Apple Garth School. I don't think it's a good idea, doesn't look like a good idea to me, because for no reason we are bringing in a 100-year school into the equation, adding contingencies, adding unforeseen things. The state has said that they're not going to cover any costs, overruns that comes out of this project. We don't have any idea about, like, what can go wrong when it's such an old school is being renovated. The public has not been made aware of any of this, and I think we just frankly don't know, even the engineers don't know what can go wrong. So that's number one with Apple Garth. The second is with Apple Garth, I'm also concerned that the kids, the students and the teachers, they are going to be exposed to construction dust from a school that is known to have asbestos problems, okay? And there is going to be other inconvenience, like, you know, they will have to be in some kind of temporary place and while the construction is going on. It's going to be a pain, it's going to be a nightmare for parents, for administration, for teachers, and everyone. It's not saving us time, it's not saving us money, and we are not solving the problem either. It's not housing all the students that are unhoused. So I'm not sure why we are doing that. I think much better plans were proposed in the past. The second thing I want to bring up is the middle school expansion, same problem, it's a middle school, 1,200 kids, that's a typical size of a middle school in New Jersey, across the whole country, typical size of a middle school on average is that, 1,200. If we are going above capacity, if we are going, reaching 2,000, we are talking about one of the largest schools in the state. We are making it one of the largest schools in the state. The, if you look at the footprint of the land, if you look at how close it is to Perrineville Road, which is a single-lane road, it's, it just doesn't have the framework to kind of support, it doesn't have the infrastructure framework to support that. The students are not going to get additional space in the, there is going to be still, it's going to be cramped in the hallways, and it's going to remain overcrowded. We are not solving this problem there. What we are actually doing in there is, it looks like we are trying to make an elephant, you know, from a dog's skeleton, okay? It's just not going to fit there, okay? And, yeah, I mean, we want to fantasize about fitting it there, let's do it, but it's not the right thing to do. We'll build a very big school, and it's going to remain overcrowded, yeah, I mean, let's get rid of the libraries, right? That's great for education, okay? And Jim, let's do that as well while we are at it. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a good thing to do. Again, we are not saving money, we are not saving time, okay? And we are not accommodating all the unhoused students. So the third thing I want to say is that the township, we have, we have parents, we are very committed, they want to talk. We have seniors who are, you know, who have been part of BOE for long, long times, who have been executives in some companies, they have been educators. It's, I'm very finding it really disappoint, I'm really disappointed that the board did not consider talking to any one of them, okay? They just came up with a plan and expected people to support this plan without, you know, without giving them the details, right? I find it, I think it's a very important thing, school is the heart of the town, let's not be short-sighted, let's think about this clearly, let's make sure everybody's on board before we do a damage we cannot undo. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I'd just like to say, this was not a plan that was developed without public input. We have been working on a plan since both referendums in 2018 and 19 both failed. This was discussed at length in committee meetings with previous boards, with this board, for the last several years. And this is a plan that we put forth that we feel is the most fiscally responsible plan to address all of the needs that we currently have in the district. Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Yeah, it took only one month to come up with this plan.
No, this plan has been being developed for years.
Peter Piero, 33, North Tisbroho Road, Monroe Township. I have a question related to Item X on the agenda, which pertains to the job title change for the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Christie, to the Director of Human Resource Clients. I'd like to know if her original position was dissolved to create this new position?
Do you have other questions? You can go through your questions before we answer them.
Okay, because my understanding from Ms. Chanley was, when I was the Director of Security, to change my position to the Director of Security in residency, that the position had to be dissolved, a new position had to be created. I had to reapply for that job. And I'd like to know if she had to do the same thing.
I don't believe we are going to discuss any personnel issues. I'm sorry, we can't discuss any personnel issues in detail.
Well, I didn't see a posting for the position, that's why I'm asking this question. Was it posted?
We're not answering any personnel issues.
Okay, I get it. So, so I don't get an answer for this. So I guess the rules for jobs only apply to certain employees, just not the ones that Ms. Kirby would like to get rid of, I guess?
No, that is not true. The district follows the policies and procedures, and we consult with legal counsel on our personnel issues. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. I'd like to ask a question about the curriculum, if I may, President Kirby. Has the report on cost of sports and clubs been generated yet by the director?
Do you have multiple questions, Ms. Arminio?
I'd like that answered and then...
Well, what we've been doing with our public forum is we've been asking our members of the public to state all of their questions, and then at the end we answer them.
I understand, but I don't think that policy has changed to that. So I would ask that you answer the question.
Well, that's how we're conducting public forum this evening. So if you have multiple questions, if you could state them, and then we will answer them at the end.
Again, I object to that, but I will concede. And the next one is, I'd like to go back to the screens on the high school. I have a question about one of the slides. Well, I need to see the screen. Can we go back to the high school screens? Do we have the ability to do that? One of the slides had Tower on it. Is that a two-story? Is that addition, that it's a two-story? It has to say with Tower.
Oh, I believe that is an error on the document, Ms. Arminio.
So that's not correct? That was, okay, so it's, it looks like, is that screen, may I ask this gentleman, is this the screen 17?
No, Michelle, you can ask me the question.
Okay, is it screen 17?
Yes.
So where it says with Tower?
There's no Tower, I just said that was incorrect.
So could that be corrected?
Yes.
Okay. And the question is, that orig, the original design for this high school was to be able to accommodate a tower at some time, or, and I've asked this question over the years, and I'd just like to ask it again on the record, there, will we still be able to put a two-story tower on that structure if the, well, when the time comes, because it's going to come sooner or later? But I want to make sure that the current design, especially because there's, it's incorrect here, will not impede any addition to that area when the time comes.
Sure, Mrs. Chanley?
I want to apologize, that is an error. The with Tower should not be there, so I will confirm, and we will correct it immediately before it is placed on the website. It is not with Tower. I do want to also say that we were very careful in all plans for both the middle school and high school, as well as elementary. Specifically, the high school, it has been asked of the architect, the architects, and it has been confirmed that if and when the need and the ability was to come forth, you absolutely can't continue with the tower. And the changes that we're looking to make based upon this current referendum will not in any way affect putting up that two-story tower.
Okay, so this that I have in my hand that was presented tonight, has that, is, has that, that has been voted on by the board, correct?
That is correct.
So the board essentially has voted on an incorrect design?
No, Michelle, that is not correct.
Okay, so this will be corrected formally?
There was a written error on this presentation tonight that said with Tower. The actual plans and the drawings are correct.
Okay, so what was voted on is correct?
Yes.
Okay, now to my original question, please.
Do you have any other questions after that?
I do not.
Okay. As far as the curriculum, Dr. Lehman, would you like to answer that?
So Mr. Dowling has that report mostly assembled, and he will be prepared to present it at any future curriculum committee meeting as it makes the agenda.
Do we have a timeframe? Because that, that report may be very instrumental for the public to see before the, before the actual budget comes out. Will it be before the budget hearing?
It could, it could be. I mean, that's something we can talk as, with the committee chair to determine when that presentation, but absolutely, he is prepared to do that whenever he is asked to do it.
Okay, so I would ask that the board be cognizant of something like that, because it isn't, you know, and I fully am supportive of that, but I think it should be part of the budget review, and the public should understand what those costs are before we vote on a budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name's Patrick Iskaros, I live 1 Camelot Drive. I just wanted to talk about outdoor classrooms. As a high school student going to MTHS, I believe outdoor classrooms can benefit, you know, us as students in like many ways. Hartford researchers have, you know, reported huge benefits in like a student's mental health, academic performance, even like maybe even reported students having an improvement in their behavior too. What I'd like to see is implementation of these outdoor classrooms in all grade levels. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. George Gunkelman, 5 Kelly Court. My first question is, in the report from Building Grounds, it talked about the roof replacements over at Apple Garth. I'd like to know why the district does not have a reserve fund for that. There's nothing more predictable than roof replacements. So rather than waiting until we're in the point, I mean, almost all buildings and grounds management of properties puts money aside every year for those routine replacements. I don't know why we don't. Now it's just presented as a crisis. To me, that's bad planning. Second question, there was a question, why don't we? Okay. Second question was, do the enrollment projections that will be addressed by the referendum, assuming the referendum passed, for how many years would that give us the projected surplus capacity or adequate capacity? So it starts, we don't get any schools till, what, 2025 or 2026? I forget the number. How many years before we'll have to do more from what we know about the projected future enrollments? That was question number two. Question... Question number three is not a question, a statement. You address some COVID issues. I just looked it up on my phone. COVID deaths in the U.S. yesterday were 700. Seven-day average is 600. The idea that it's over is a little bit nonsensical. My fourth item question is this, the board decided last year that there would be a two-tiered system of, in how the, one of the contractors, Reed Sound, would do. One tier of prices is for the school, and the other is for outside groups. Reed Sound has given township community groups bids that are so excessively high that outside groups, when they bid it, are less than half. They've changed their programming because how onerous the Reed Sound component would be. To bring one group in, the needed equipment would be $10,000 for one event, just for the equipment. Outside sound groups that would come to here would do it for less than five. So it's, it's very nice to appear that we're being very generous, and we're letting other township organizations use facilities for free, but when you stick it to them with the, when you allow one of your preferred contractors to group, abuse their status by charging more than double what everybody else's rate is, it's not much of a favor anymore. They've canceled programs because of how onerous it is to deal with Reed Sound. If that's news to you, you need to pay a little bit more attention to what Reed Sound is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address any other questions on the roof replacement? Do you want to have Mr. Take explain how he, I know that we have discussed it many times of how you plan out for maintenance and the long-range facilities plan, and that, I don't know if you want to give any, have him give any clarity onto that, the roof?
Well, I'm going to go backwards, if I may. So I want to just make a statement, I just want to make a correction, if I may, I want to correct you, sir. Out of the township groups, don't get anything for free here. So if you're an out-of-the-t township group here, you pay.
I'm talking about township organizations.
Okay, so I respectfully, we don't require, I don't believe Reed Sound is required. Is that correct, Mr. Take?
Yes, they are.
They are the only group that we utilize?
Yeah.
Okay, so I could look into it, but I'll be honest with you. I, I'm sorry. We do our best to try and keep the rates down for the people that are our own people in the township. As far as Reed Sound is concerned, if they're doing something that's not appropriate, as far as, you know, cost and price, I'll be happy to have that conversation, Mr. Take. I'm sorry, I didn't know that off the top of my head. I don't handle every single thing off the top of my head, but I would be happy to look into that for you. I do agree, I hear what you're saying, that it then provides an extra cost to the person when they're trying to utilize the place, and I'll be happy to look into that. As far as the roof is concerned, I've been here one year and a half, and the Applegarth roof has been in, in need of various different repairs through many, many boards of education. I cannot speak on what has happened prior to me being here. I will let you know that Mr. Take has done a fabulous job in keeping an order of need in regards to what we have done and what we haven't done. And I believe it's my understanding, and I know I'm always quoted, so I want to make sure that I'm not quoted, because it's only my understanding, and I definitely am not always right, and I do make mistakes, and I don't know everything off the top of my head. But I will tell you, it is my understanding that Applegarth has been kicked down the road for many, many, many years. I was the vice principal, acting principal, and then the principal of that building. I was never, it was never brought to me at any time that there would be any major repairs beyond whatever was done, just to keep it where it is. And I believe it's my understanding that Mr. Take works for whichever board is in session at that time, and it is my understanding that no major monies were put to the side to attend to the roof of Applegarth. So for me to sit here now, and I'm superintendent of schools, I agree, and I take full responsibility, we can only move forward now with problems that are currently given to us. We could not have major ma- we could not have made major changes, and I believe, I don't want to quote you, Mr. Take, if you want to speak on this, I believe you have been, we have, we've heard you state in various different BG and T meetings that at no time were you told by the Board of Education to move forward with a roof replacement. Thank you very much, Mr. Take. He said that is correct.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss any questions?
Okay, response?
No. What was the question?
Every school has a roof.
Okay, Mr. Gunkelman, I'm sorry, you're out of order. Your time is up. Good evening, Mr. Dr. Parab.
Prakash Parab, 33, Denard Drive. Just general comment and then questions. I looked at the enrollment, which was published till November of last year. Our Applegarth school is 181% capacity. Our MTMS is at 140% capacity, means we have 40% more students. And Oak Tree, 145%. So we have 45% more students. And high school, another 40% more students. So I'm happy that the referendum is coming. It is time that our students come first, children come first. I'm very happy that board has approved the referendum. I was happy when last year, entire board unanimously approved the plan to be presented to Department of Education, and it is continuing. Now, the comment is, I looked at the referendum presentation on the website. All the information is on different sites, you know, frequently asked questions. Who's going to click there? Put one slide with all the information, so that same questions people will not ask. They will have all the information, prepare a slide deck, give a background information, why the, you know, provide the information. The previous referendum marched 2018, middle school, which cost for $69 million, which will cost us today with, with all the, you know, going on, it will cost us $90 million today, which failed by 145 votes. The $146 million, again, 2019 referendum, with $75 million for middle school and $71 million for high school expansion, which is 146. Today, I'm sure it will cost us $180 billion. Those two referendums have failed because people are not ready for big referendum. And Applegarth School was not included in that. We had old school, Applegarth School was not included. How one can forget Applegarth School? I'm very happy that Applegarth School not only takes into consideration expansion, but renovations, and this is important for our elementary school children. So I request the board to update, put all the information together, and have more presentations in February. We cannot wait till March to presentations. Like to have seven, eight, or 10 presentations across the schools, across the community for this referendum. Now, the slide, impact to the schools, presentation on the web, we want to know how much square foot is being added to middle school. What is the cost? I read it, it is there. $19,275 square foot. The cost is there, but it is hidden somewhere else. $13.8 million for high school, which we had projected 70 million, which will cost us today 90 million. We are doing expansion for $14 million in efficient way, what the taxpayers deserve. So I can go on, make those changes in the slides, where impact to the schools, we want to have square footing, what we're adding, what is the cost? Applegarth renovation and expansion, I am happy we are having new roofing system. I'm happy we are having new boiler, new HVAC, list goes on. The school deserves it. My question is, are we solving the lead poisoning? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parab.
Update the slides. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know the administration is working, they're meeting regularly with the referendum committee. If you, I know Mrs. Chanley is going to give an update in her superintendent's report of where they are with scheduling presentations, but we can ask the administration to go back and look at how the information is presented on the website, and maybe consolidate some of that and add. And I do know that there are, is a lot more information that is going to be putting up their presentations, as well as other information. So I would welcome you to keep checking back at that website, and thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Doug Poye, 4 Tamborack Road. Some of my comments or questions are somewhat minor, but in the business administrator report, item I talks about renting space at a facility in East Brunswick for our cheerleader program. And the contract that, that you have covers, starts in September of '22, it runs to June of '23. Yet it says that the facility will be used starting on Thursday, November 17th through March the 9th. Are there no facilities in the high school that the cheerleaders could use? And why is this coming up now for approval if the cheerleaders were actually starting to use it back in November? And if at that time, the parents were paying for it, I really think that you're in an area that could be a very dangerous precedent. If you allow parents to take a school organization and conduct activities off of school property at their own expense, I think there might be some legal issues involved there, as well as some liability issues involved there. So I think that needs to be looked at carefully. In your bill list, and this pops up at various times, and I always want to bring it up for clarification, there's payroll payments being made to a court officer and to Middlesex County Sheriff. I think the public, at least I know, I would like to know, what are those payments for? Why are we hiring or paying the Middlesex County Sheriff? What services is he providing? Also, every month, there tends to be an approval to move somebody up because they have an advanced degree. Or in this particular month, I noticed that we're paying quite a few teachers for tuition reimbursement. I think the public would appreciate knowing what stipulations are in place, so that if a teacher has been reimbursed for graduate credits, and they then leave the district within X number of years, what obligation do they have to repay that? I think there's something in place, but I think the public would appreciate knowing what that is. And finally, in terms of the, the program or the presentation that was given tonight, the middle, and I know you've already got it in the package, in the referendum package, but the more I think about it, and the more I see what's here on these printed pages that we were given, it looks to me as if this middle school project is just a disaster waiting to happen. I know at one time, they talked about building a separate Applegarth school, and that's what I meant, that the Applegarth school is a disaster waiting to happen. And I'm really wondering, with all of these upgrades that are listed on page five, and the, the redevelopment of what is currently the cafeteria into classrooms, which is, which is a cost, if you take all of that renovation and all of those changes to that cafeteria, and add those up, what is the total cost of that aspect of the project? And then what is the cost of the addition to Applegarth? And if you add those two costs together, is it comparable to simply building a new building, which would not inconvenience the students, nor the teachers, nor put any students at risk? Because when you look at how this is going to work out, it just appears to me, I don't know how they're going to do it. I don't know how they're going to be working in that old cafeteria and making those classrooms down there. Where are those kids going to be going? And what kind of dangers exist? So I have that question. And also, will there be trailers involved? And if so, is that part of the referendum cost, or is that an additional cost? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poye. If we want to start with your first question, the cheerleading program. Dr. Lehman, did you want to explain that?
Sure, it's a, that location is budgeted for, in the proposed budget for next year. It's a cost that we will assume as it, it's consistent with our philosophy in terms of paying for the opportunities and the, and the facilities needed to run a program. Historically, that has not been in our budget, and has not been paid for by the district. The athletic director notified us recently that we are able to pick up that cost this year in advance of what we were planning on budgeting next year. Approached Mrs. Allen, Ms. Chanley, and myself, and we basically said, if it's something that's in your budget, and you have the availability, the ability to pay for it this year, we should, we can move forward and cover that cost. So that's why it's retroactive to November, because they had been using it in November. But again, it's something we're covering in the future. We don't have covered this year, but we have the ability to pay for, and that's why that's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Ms. Allen, did you want to address the bill list about the checks being made to the sheriff's office?
Yes, so those would be payroll garnishments that, you know, what's withheld from people's pay because they have a garnishment, the court order. We have to do that. So that would appear every pay. And it, I think, was that the only question?
Yeah, that was the only one. And as far as teacher reimbursement, Mrs. Chanley, if you want to explain that?
As part of all teachers, and some staff members other than teachers, as well as administrators, they all have a contract that is considered law, and the contract states that they can in advance get permission from whoever the authority would be, whether it be superintendent, assistant superintendent. First, they get it signed by the building principal, depending upon what their role is and where they work within the district. We must confirm that it is graduate-level course. It is not needed to continue their certification, and that gets approved in advance of starting the course. Once they take the course, they need to provide, I believe the grade is a B or better. Do not quote me, but I believe that is correct. And if they were to leave the district after they are reimbursed, I want to say, and I believe it, it actually may have changed recently with the administrators, but I leave under the teacher contract. Actually, I'm not going to state, because I don't know the exact answer. It's either two or three years. Thank you. Two years, because I know if I make a mistake, it's a real problem. So I believe it is two years, and I believe under the new administrative contract, there is, we have changed that to be a more length of time. Am I correct, Dr. Lehman? Same two? I thought it was three. Okay, so that means they have to pay us back. So we are constantly pleased when we have our staff want to improve themselves academically.
And as far as Applegarth School, I think we have done our due diligence as a board, listening to architects, several different architects. We had SSP do a complete analysis of Applegarth School and the ability to renovate. We also had DI Group look into that. There is no safety concerns that the board has seen or been made aware of by our architect or our director of facilities. The recommendation was to move forward with renovation, and as always, the safety and well-being of our entire staff and student body is at the forefront of every decision that we make. Good evening.
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I'd like to talk about an earlier BG and T meeting at which the architect was asked how construction can be done safely on Applegarth School while it is in session. And the architect said it would require careful planning and close coordination with the business administrator. However, the business administrator is now excluded from the BG and T meetings. And so this raises concern as to whether we can safely plan this construction, and on the agenda today, we have to, is approval for the business administrator to take a professional development class in capital projects. So I think that we should take advantage of her knowledge, her experience, and include her in the BG and T meetings. Already, I mean, the, you know, the referendum has not happened yet, but the referendum date was botched by the administration. For months, we were told there would be an April referendum, but it was discovered only recently that we can't have an April referendum, because the statute does not allow it unless there's a township election in April. And we knew for months there would not be a township election in April. So I'm concerned about, I also think that the Applegarth School renovation and expansion project is a, is a very risky project, and the architect also said that the estimate did not include the kind of unforeseen problems that normally occur when you work on such an old building, especially problems underground. And I know the piping that runs throughout Applegarth School is over 100 years old. So... So, and all its systems, electrical and the windows and everything are well beyond their useful life. And I think that it would create more value for taxpayers to, and be safer to just build a new school. So that's number one. My second concern is about legal fees. Years ago, we used to have a salaried in-house attorney who was paid $193,000. Since we switched over to a law firm whose attorneys bill us hourly, our legal fees are projected to be probably over $250,000. I think they might stand around $230,000 at this point. Every month-
Ms. Aziz, this is not an agenda item.
No, no. This is about legal fees.
This is not on the, this is not an agenda item.
But at the committee report, legal fees were discussed. And Oprah was broken out. And we were told that out of the $21,000 of legal fees, 900 is Oprah. But a recent revelation of your email log revealed that our former business administrator filed a court claim against the district, which is a precursor to a lawsuit. So why aren't those legal expenses associated with his suspension also broken out at the monthly finance committee meetings? Because I think there should be some transparency about that.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments.
No response?
No. Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Pradeep Melem. So I have like a couple of questions, first related to the referendum.
Can you state your name and municipality?
Pradeep Melem, Monroe Township. We have some plans on the, on the presentation that is printed out, like page 18, 19, 20, only pertain to high school. Why don't we have plans for Applegarth and Middle School like those? That's my first question. The second question, how we are handling the, is there any risks and any mitigation plan for the risks that you are going to foresee? So number one is the, the price overruns. Because we are going to start the construction almost after a year. Right? After the, so now we are approving a budget, like 100 million or 103 million, but the construction will start after certain point and it will end around like three years from now. So what will happen if a particular project is going to be cost more during the construction phase? So do we have any budget or any accommodation for the price overruns? And second thing, so do we have any other, any health-related risk mitigation plans for the students while the construction is going, especially with the Applegarth? Because it's a very old building, it might have some asbestos or something, we don't know. When it opens up, so how are we going to mitigate the health risks for the kid? And how are we going to mitigate if there is any situation? If a particular school is, has to close for a week or 10 days for any construction-related work? So how are we going to mitigate it? So these are the construction-related or referendum-related things. So on the same lines, so now Applegarth roof is going to live on a tarpaulin cover or some, some pool liner cover or something, right? So that's planning problem. But why can't we plan for all other schools and make sure like there is a yearly check on like, I know Mr. Take will do his own due diligence work, but why don't, as a board and as to the public, why don't you present what is the status of each school roofs? And like what is the age and what is the, what is the budget that you are going to put aside for these capital projects? And so regarding the committee meeting reports, so for college visits, you are going to excuse either three days or five days. Do we need to provide any proof from the, from the school that we visited? The second one, when the COVID policy is abolished means by the time you come up with a new policy, what will happen during now, between now and by the time you establish a new policy or a new workflow? With the people that are required for home instruction and how it is going to work? And when I observe like, when I see the new curriculum committee meeting and finance committee meeting, Ms. Belko mentioned she has to carry over the new curriculum requirements to the finance committee to give the numbers. But this was never happened in, in the previous meetings. It used to go to, the curriculum committee will go back to the administration and it goes back to the, the specific building principal. And the principal will give the budget recommendations to the finance department and they put those money in the budget, like why the policy, why the process is going to change. So that's all my questions for now.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. I'm going to work backwards. So I can't speak before I was here. But the items that you're hearing about the curriculum moving to finance is not the same level that you're thinking of with the principals. So these items would fall directly under the purview of Dr. Lehman under curriculum. In the past, curriculum was just moving it forward and it was just being put on the board agenda. Now, as it checks and balance, we do not do that. Once curriculum agrees that it's a worthwhile program and they're all on board, they then bring it to finance. But it would not even be discussed at curriculum or finance until before the scenes, we discuss it with Ms. Allen to make sure that we even have the funds. So it's actually a better checks and balance than ever occurred before. The things that you're talking about at the building level are not what she's talking about. Building level is completely separate. So that answers your last question. I am going to make a comment regarding 17, 18. So it was brought to our attention by, by suggestions through security reasons at a state level as well as a conversation that we have with our director of security. If you'll notice, the proposed classrooms are more detailed because they don't show any access, any egresses of any clients. On the high school, it's kind of like you just four classrooms together and we're showing it to you. In Applegarth and the middle school, if we show it to you, we are showing you stairways, entrances, exits. And it's been decided by the Board of Education upon recommendation from both safety organizations that we've had when we went to meetings at school boards as well as our own director of security that we will not be providing that. So that is the difference. If you look like on page 18, on slide 18, it actually shows four classrooms. Classroom, 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 classroom. But there's nothing else there. The reason why those classrooms are being added on to an exterior area whereas the other classrooms are being renovated where you would, if we show you the visuals, you would actually see entrance, exit, windows, egresses, stairways and so forth. So that was another two of your questions. I think the other questions maybe Mr. Take might want to respond to. I think that you talked a little bit about, which I know the architect has already talked about. I don't know, Mr. Take, if you want to expand upon how we're going to be working closely to decide when children would need to be, you know, removed, replaced. And so I think that three of your questions, if I'm not mistaken, pertain directly to that.
Certainly. Good evening. I believe the one question was regarding cost for the project. So the project cost was developed by an independent estimating firm hired by the Board of Education, Epic Management. They're one of the largest construction, construction management and estimating firms in the state of New Jersey. So they developed the estimate using their database as well as state databases. And they have escalation in there. So the escalation accounts for percentage increases that are anticipated over the years. So it is calculated in there. That estimate is submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education on NJ DOE Cost Summary Estimate Form 130. And the Department of Education reviews that to make sure that the proposed estimate for the project is in keeping with what they see throughout the state and they approve that. Also included in there is a contingency and the contingency takes care of cost overruns or issues that may arise. So those are accounted for. As far as specific plans for managing safety on the, on the project, that will come after the project is started to be designed. What you've seen are schematic designs only and the yearly process that Mr. Aldeso talked about in Milestones. Putting together a project of this magnitude, right now you see four or five schematic drawings for a building. The bid documents that will go out will be closer to 400 or 500 drawings. Detailed structural drawings with calculations, plumbing drawings, electrical drawings, fire protection drawings, architectural drawings, all the systems tied together, specification manuals. In the development of that information includes the management plans for the contractor. You'll engage a construction manager also to assist with that and guide safety planning, emergency evacuation planning, monitoring. The board has engaged Dr. Lynch, for example, of Environmental Safety Management in the past on projects to do additional oversight and monitoring for issues such as indoor air quality, safety, et cetera. So we would proceed in that regard. Again, that's to come after the project is designed. Did I miss anything?
And the cost of any temporary classrooms. I know there was a line item on the, on that form that you mentioned as well.
Yes. Mr. Aldeso mentioned that in his presentation as well.
Yes. I just wanted to reiterate that because I know that has been misinformation out to the public that that was not included and it is however included in that. Thank you.
So I have like last few questions, like last few seconds. So can this, this Form D 130, can be made into public? Or is there any logistics that is preventing us to see that form?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you please add it to our referendum site, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then one of the other questions that you had mentioned was the college visits. Currently, there is a policy, I believe, at the high school. If you are, you, right now, there is no limit by the policy of how many college visits a student could go to. The state now is asking the Board of Education to decide a number. They didn't give us a recommended number. It's just a blank that we have to fill in with a number. Currently, currently, you do have to provide paperwork from a college when you have, when you return and you want that absence excuse. So there is, there is that in place at the high school already.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I have a lot of referendum questions, so I'll make a few comments and then I'll probably have to go to the second session. The first thing that comes to my mind, I think that, you know, when you talk this whole referendum thing is, I can't help but remember the quote from our BGNT committee person, our chair, who was the committee chair when this whole planning started for this referendum, when he said, "Putting money into Applegarth would be like throwing money in a hole." I mean, it's clear as day. And the fact that you have this many people here who are regulars, I'll call them, that actually come here to all these meetings and are still asking questions a month, month and a half before this referendum, that probably should be a clear indication to the board that the plans aren't clear. They're not all in one place. Mr. Brog was absolutely correct. It's like trying to pull teeth to be able to get the information. So, you know, it is what it is at this point, but I think this referendum, it has a real slim chance of passing. Most of the community has no idea what this is about. And I think the plans for Applegarth are just a complete disaster. And they're not even broken out financially. How much is the referendum, how much is the renovations costing versus the entire site plan? Unless, I just don't have access to that information, so maybe Mrs. Allen could, could answer it. But I'll come back to the referendum things because there are a few things I wanted to talk, talk about in the staff agenda items before the board vote. The first one is the position for Mr. Maralta. I'd like some clarification on, this is a particular administrator in our district that seems to have climbed the ladder pretty quickly. If you go back to all of the previous positions, you know, he's had some hefty raises and this is a pretty big, you know, 143,000. I'd like to know more about what the responsibilities are for this position. There are a lot of titles here. I don't know how many titles one person could possibly do. Is he going to keep his existing position to the end of the year? Are we going to have to hire someone else for that position and what is the cost going to be? He was previously approved for a 10% commission on advertising sales. Is that going to stay? Is that going to go? So I'd like to know more about that. And given his recent, I'll be honest, given his recent involvement in the PTA functions at Oak Tree Applegarth and what apparently was the board president's request that he come and interfere with an election to get her friend, the president role, I was really hoping to see his resignation on the agenda versus a promotion. And I think the board president should consider recusing herself when it comes to that vote since, you know, she's been heavily involved. And this perhaps could be looked at as a pat on the back after, after him doing such a good job. Or maybe not doing a good job because the candidate didn't get elected. But the next thing is, there is a assistant principal that's leaving the district. This isn't the first one, I don't believe. Yeah. It's not a proud moment when you talk about an assistant principal leaving the district for another principal position in another district. We should be promoting our people. We've had two principals leave in the elementary schools in the last year and we didn't give assistant principals an opportunity to move into the principal role. So what do you think these people are going to do? They're not going to stay around. We had a new principal come from outside at Mill Lake. We had a new principal come from outside at Woodland. If assistant principals aren't given an opportunity to move up, they will leave. I think that's all I have. Oh, I am questioning too, why are we continuing, continuing to do all the 17% additional contracts for staff? I know that's pretty hefty across. I know that there's leave positions, et cetera. Haven't seen that in previous years. Is that something we're going to continue to do? And what is the additional cost to the district by doing that?
Thank you. Your time has ended.
Any answers?
No. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, good. So you select who you want to answer questions to.
Good evening.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, I live in Monroe Township. I wanted to speak exactly with regard to the position of Director of Innovative and Equity Programs, Community Relations, Partnerships and Careers in Technology. As the leader of the state mandated CPAG group, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, we are supportive of this position as we have long advocated for equity of all students as well as partnerships for our Life Skills Program and TAPS programs as well as more inclusive modified electives. And a position like this is key for the success of all of our learners. In addition, we are supportive of Mr. Maralta for that said position and let me tell you why. It takes a lot of work on our part of CPAG to advocate and work towards a truly inclusive environment. And when we encounter educators that truly get it, we need to support them because so many don't understand the importance of an inclusive society, even those that might have special needs children. Many know the quality and caliber of Mr. Maralta's work with regard to our Elite and Arts Programs, but I bet many don't know how much he has truly done over the last few years for special education students, for all learners in our district, to assist in paving the path to true equity. Since 2019, I have worked directly with Mr. Maralta, not only in my role as leader of the Mount CPAG, but also as a parent of a special education student in a self-contained class. I met Mr. Maralta in a meeting scheduled to improve the overall culture with respect to special education. And it was evident that he possessed a level of education and conviction necessary of an effective leader and that his commitment to our district, our students and our staff was unwavering. CPAG has been collaborating with him on countless initiatives geared towards instilling a spirit of inclusiveness in our schools and community at large while ensuring that all learners are provided an appropriate education and that we are providing equity for our students. He has attended monthly CPAG meetings each and every month for the past three years and listened to concerns, comments of parents and worked closely with the group to address changes necessary for special education students. In his capacity as supervisor of Applied Arts and Careers Technology, he has collaborated closely with the supervisors of special education and building principals to make positive changes regarding special education. It is in turn, in large part, thanks to him that there has been improvement in our district and he has provided the district with an invaluable assistance in bridging the special ed community with the general ed community at large. Some areas that have shown improvement, thanks to the innovative work done by him, special area classes at the elementary level, electives at the middle and high school, inclusion of special education students for our summer programs and incorporating our extended school year program into his summer programs with success. Look at the staff that surrounds him. In addition, it is worthy to note that the summer programs were created and implemented by him. And this is the first time these programs have been successful for the district. On behalf of CPAG, I thank the board and our administrators for considering this position and this candidate. And I am confident that Mr. Maralta would be an ideal person for this position to continue to take us forward and to be an integral part of Monroe Township's school district success if he is selected in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. So, actually, I just, so we were notified this week by NJ SIAA. So the abbreviation slips my mind, but it is the governing body for New Jersey intercollegiate, interscholastic sports in the state. So high school sports, the overseeing organization. That coach, Mr. Christian Jessup, was named the January Coach of All Seasons. So he's 14 years of coaching experience and currently coaches girls soccer, girls winter track and girls spring track. Coaches are recognized throughout the state that show dedication and commitment to athletics. Coaches are recognized throughout the state that show dedication and commitment to athletics by being a multi-sport coach. So, congratulations to Coach Jessup. That was just sent to us a couple of days ago and it's on social media. It's on NJSIAA's Twitter account and everything like that. So, congratulations to him. Also, all-state band auditions with this past weekend. We had six Monroe Township High School band students qualify to audition this past weekend at JP Stevens High School, featuring the top-scoring region musicians from the North, Central, South Jersey, respectively. We're all proud of each of them that qualified from MTHS. Four of those students successfully placed in the New Jersey 2023 All-State Symphonic Band, all in the percussion section, and these students will rehearse in Atlantic City as a part of the state conference next month and will culminate with a performance in Newark at the beautiful NJPAC. The students are under the direction of Sean Nagpaul, Martin Griff, Marty Griffin, and Yale Snyder. So, congratulations to those students and their performance this past weekend. And then upcoming this weekend, the middle school is going to region-level competitions where they're going to be in West Windsor, Plainsboro, and 40 middle school students, band students, will audition for the middle school region band, wind ensemble, and percussion ensemble. So, we wish them luck this coming weekend. That's it.
Our next item on the agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
Certainly. So, I want to thank Ms. Fabiano. She brought out, she actually brought a lot of questions and I did want to just comment if I, if I can on a few of them. So, some of the things that we discussed is really making sure that we are showcasing our children in all ways. So, I've asked the leadership team. I've reached out to the principals and vice principals. Mr. Perez, who is our webmaster, is utilizing Sprout Social, which is an opportunity for scheduling. I'm looking at Ms. Bora because she kind of brought it to us, scheduling to make sure that we get as much information out there as possible. We did get some more information and I believe it has been updated. We're looking to really showcase all of our students, but in order for us to do that, we have to get the information. So, I know that we have a lot of our administrators here. I want to compliment them in the last couple of days and I want to remind them, send us pictures, send us information. We want to be able to showcase everyone's child whenever possible. We, of course, make sure that we have the appropriate, appropriate documentation to make sure that they can be visible on all of our sites. I do want to also comment that I do agree that we need to get the word out. So, a personalized letter was sent to every HOA, inclusive of both the planned retirement communities and non-retirement communities. This past week, we did discuss that as well in the committee. And what has happened is since that time, we have been notified, we have the League of Women Voters, and this is all going to be on the website, so you don't have to write it down, but I do want to say it aloud. So, on February 27th, we're going to the League of Women Voters. They have asked us if we could join them at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at the municipal building in the courtroom. On February 16th, Rosmore Village has invited us. We will be going there for our presentation. March the 2nd, we will be doing a presentation in Mill Lake, so we can handle one side of town for those people that live on that side of town. And then March the 9th, on the other side of town, we'll be coming to Applegarth. We currently are waiting for Concordia to give us their date, and I believe it is encore than it is asked if we could video Concordia and then they could show it at their commands. Additionally, the website has been updated at a minimum once a week. I did hear what Dr. Prog had to say, but in consultation with those members who actually create the website, and I was speaking to Mr. Feldman, it is impossible to put everything as they want it on one page. You have to click. It's too much information and then it gets all jumbled together. So, there's a reason why things are separated. I do want to also make a statement. I am absolutely going to invite Ms. Allen to any BG and T meetings she'd like to attend and just so she knows, just so everyone is aware, the business administrator, Mr. Maralda, because he's been one of the people that has helped us with our marketing, our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lehman, myself, Mr. Feldman, I'm going to say Boris' long, last name wrong. I apologize. Boris is back there. He's been at our meetings as well. We've had, when, we've had the president, the MTA at our meeting. We had our president, vice president of the Board of Education, who am I leaving out, and Mr. Cheek. And we meet regularly, I would say probably twice a week, to have the conversations about the referendum, get the word out, update the website, make sure it's clear. I did want to thank Ms. Augbach. We had a very productive meeting today. She's been meeting with the representation of the NJEA to talk about the support. We say, please vote. Organizations can tell you how to vote, or let me replace, can suggest how they are supporting or not supporting and what way to vote. We do not do that. And I believe Ms. Augbach is going to be partnering. She's definitely going to be partnering with us and we're talking about in what way she can and what that looks like. And she came up with certain different activities. One is called Hustle, which is similar to Remind App. We'll be sending out texts. They're setting up a phone tree. They're going to be sending out publications. What other things? Dr. Lehman, what are the couple of things that she mentioned today? Am I leaving out? Posters, banners. We're also in the, we've already ordered them to create banners for all of the schools. It will be on everyone's website. We're going to partner with MTA to discuss with them what could be considered a tagline and also a link to the particular website on the teachers that would like to put it on their, on their pages. So, we're really trying to get the word out. We try and answer questions within 24 hours. There are some people that have asked excellent questions, but they're extremely lengthy and we want to make sure that we give the appropriate answers. So, there we are in the process of providing that as well. Want to make sure, let's see if I left anything out. The other thing I would like to share is I had a wonderful visit. We went over to Jamesburg, to GMB, and we met with Dr. Valani and Mr. Donahue, who's the principal there, as well as one of their guidance counselors. We're making some changes. We've actually pushed off their date where we go to register their children because we would like to be able to approve to have some of our children as well as the teachers of the elective programs to go and visit. We feel very, we feel, we feel it's very important to make sure that our eighth grade children feel that comfort level of being Monroe Falcons even before they get to our high school. And we want to make sure that we respect that they have tremendous talent and sometimes due to either lack of encouragement on our behalf, not on Jamesburg's, but on behalf, as well as to just a comfort level. The more you know, the more you feel comfortable. The more information we give, the more they'll feel confident. We want them to try and take some of the high-end and higher area electors of robotics and so forth, as well as some areas of music. And to no fault of their own, they are a K through A district that does not, is not able to offer within their budget the same things that we have as offerings here. And we want to make sure that they are not in any way limited opportunity-wise. Also, Dr. Valani has set up a, I want to say it's the third Tuesday of every month. We converse. We talk about the things that are going on. So, we are very excited. It is a commitment, something that I did start last year. We are continuing and we are going to see if they're able to afford, because it is very costly to join us on our culminating eighth grade trip. And if not, then we're going to create something of a fielding and we will be able to do it right on grounds because it's, everything's very costly for all parents and we respect that. So, that's some additional information. I would like to say thank you to the Board of Education. It is, School Boards Recognition Month. You are only as good and as strong as the team that surrounds you. Support is everything because you can't get anything done if you don't have support. So, I did want to just personally say a thank you to the school board that I work with, day in and day out, and thank you for the support and, you know, thank you for the constructive criticism when warranted and for the feedback. And we want to, you know, I can speak for myself. I want to do things better and I want to make sure that we continue to collaborate and have, you know, a productive team. On that note, I will now get down to business. One of the highlights is wishing well to two members of our community who are retiring. One is our high school business teacher, Mr. Ralph. I apologize. I think it's Zam, Zamrisky. Is that right?
Zamrisky.
Zamrisky.
Yeah.
Thank you. He is our business teacher and he's been here for many years. He's in charge of our school store. So, every once in a while, you will see some e-blasts regarding the merchandise that he likes to sell. And I wish him well on his newest endeavor. And the other one is a Paramill Lake, Mary Agillo Vasso, and she is also retiring. And I think that it's very exciting when people get to that point in their life where they're going to be able to enjoy the sunshine. So, I wish them well. On that note, at this time, under a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personal items A through Y with the exception of item V.
Move the motion? Motion. Is there any questions? Mrs. Ratner?
I just had a couple. So, my first is regarding enrollment. I had just noticed that there's a large decline in the Oak Tree numbers. It's went from 2020, 772, and then 721 in 2021, and now there's 634. And that seems like a pretty significant jump. You know, usually it varies a couple here and there year to year, but I was wondering if there was a reason. The second was regarding the home instruction. I just wanted to clarify if the COVID home instruction was being included in that list that is on our agenda. And then as far as the, the 17%, and this was something I had previously, previously asked, and I know it was mentioned that a lot of times we prefer to use our staff when there is, you know, a temporary replacement or like a small date range. But I did see that there were a few, both on the 10-member vote, you know, the high school as well as the K to 8, where it's for resignations or retirements that go through June. And so, I had just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Mrs. Chanley?
Certainly. So, to your first question, I don't have any data in front of me. I, I don't know if I can secure that data because I don't know, I don't think they do an exit survey when they take their child out. I don't have any personal knowledge. I believe you don't as well, Dr. Lehman?
No, I, I think it's probably just a trend in, everybody moved in at the same time and now their kids are getting a little older.
Okay.
Right? So, they're moving up through the schools, right? And the construction certainly has slowed down through COVID and things like to a certain extent. You know, pick up a little bit more, but I think we've seen a, you know, it's overcapacity, but we've seen a plateauing, you know, of, of, let's call it fresh new movement. You know, some years we get all first graders. Some years we get all second graders. We've kind of seen, just probably related to the economy and COVID.
Home instruction wise, what is it that particular?
So, home instruction's included. Yep. So, there hasn't been a ton of home instruction for the COVID side of things. We have had home instruction, you know, on the traditional home instruction side of things. But yes, yep.
And I'll be happy to answer the 17%. So, 17% are posted in such a fashion where it's always concurrent. So, we will post for a teacher certificated and the 17% so that we make sure, because we want to make sure the children are covered. When it's a leave, we tend, if we get a person, we'll take them as a leave and we do have some leaves. If we don't have anybody, we always go to our own teachers and staff and they get the 17%. When it's a resignation or a retirement, once again, it's posted, depending upon the time of year, most people are currently employed. So, it's very difficult to get outside certificated personnel. From a financial status, it winds up being cheaper, but that is not why we do it. If we have a viable candidate who can do the job and do the job well in a leave position or in a permanent position and it's tenured, we will absolutely employ that person. If we do not have anyone, we have 17%. And due to the way the schedule works at the middle school and high school, you have ready, willing, and able employees to do that because they only teach three on one day and two on the other. It's a five-day rotation, A and B. And in the middle school, they only teach four, four periods. So, in addition to team planning and prep, they do have the additional time when appropriate. So, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. And then I did just have one. I wasn't sure. Was board action included for this?
No.
Okay. But never mind. Forget it.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Scott?
Um, yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no to item T.
Okay. Mr. Tufano?
Yes to all.
Ms. Alvarez?
Uh, yes to all, but I'm abstaining on R and T.
Okay. Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes for Q's on letter T.
Um, Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes to all.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Maralda. Congratulations, Mr. Maralda.
So, it's recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools that the board approve the following certificated staff member at the following step on the guide. It's letter V.
Motion.
Is there a motion? Second, fourth, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabiano. Is there any questions? All right. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
For a 9-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personal items Z through AV.
Motion. Second.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Allen? Ms. DePaine?
I'm waiting. I'm looking for something. Thank you. So, yes.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Under a 10-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board actions items A through O.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions?
I just had a follow-up question. I had asked a couple of questions about the calendar, but I did have one other concern. I know I had spoken to a couple of board members about it and I guess my big concern is that the district calendar is including certain religious holidays that don't affect the school days. So, you know, I'm, I'm Jewish, right? So, I will use Hanukkah as my example. That's on the calendar, but it doesn't actually affect the days that we are in school. And I guess my concern is, you know, according to the Department of Education website, there's over 100 religious holidays and I don't want students or families feeling excluded if their holiday is not on the calendar, if it's not affecting the, you know, the, the school year. And so, you know, I was trying to think of ways where we could still give this information to people without possibly excluding, like Chinese New Year was a couple of days ago. So, you know, if I had a student that was celebrating that and it's not there, but Hanukkah's there, then I might start to feel excluded. And so, I figured if we could remove, at least those perhaps that aren't affecting the calendar and maybe we can include an attachment of the approved DOE holidays or a link to them, we can still give that information. I, I know that this has been something discussed in previous years, but seeing it, you know, there are more holidays that were included, which in some ways I appreciate, but then I also feel like we further run the risk of potentially excluding.
I'd be happy to answer that. I've been here a year and a half. I have been asked multiple times to please include all of the holidays on the calendar, even if we're not, we're out of school. So, I can't do both. Either we leave everything off or we put as much on as possible. I would love to put on Chinese New Year. I did not realize. I believe Chinese New Year was Sunday, if I'm not mistaken. I can be happy to have that in the future, but I believe that it was board, board members as well as non-board members and people in the public said, "Could you please include as many holidays as possible?" So, although I respect your opinion, at this time, my recommendation is to include them. I've been asked to include them. It doesn't hurt anybody to include them. We're trying very hard to make an inclusive community. We have a lot of different ethnic groups, a lot of different religions, and I want to thank you because you did bring some errors. You know, you are, and I also celebrated Pastor Brandon. It was listed in the wrong place and I celebrated. So, although I hear what you're saying, unless the board tells me otherwise, at this juncture, it is my recommendation to include as many holidays and I will remember Chinese New Year next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bierman?
I have another calendar question. So, I was reading about how certain holidays, like Election Day, for example, there's a statute that allows for staff to take off that day and they have to be paid. And I think there was a second one that was on the list that would be a holiday covered under this statute, but we don't have the day off. Do we have issues on those days with staff not attending and then having any difficulty with the coverage historically?
No, historically, attendance is not at its best by students and staff then for the week of November, which has worked out well with, to have some continuity of education because of the way it works out with Election Day. But to my knowledge and myself in this position and as a principal, we did never have an issue with a staff member for Election Day.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes. Ms. Ratner?
Um, I'm going to say yes to all, however, no to the calendar, which is letter F.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
Yes to all, except item D.
Ms. Alvarez?
Uh, yes to all, except D. I'm abstaining and no to the calendar. Item F.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain on item D.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all.
Ms. Scott?
Yes to all, abstain D.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes to all, abstain D.
Yes to all, abstain D.
Okay, um, Ms. Beerman?
Yes to all, no on D.
Okay, Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Ms. Allen, can I just recuse on letter O?
Oh. Sure. Take recuse on letter O. On O, a recuse. Recuse on O. Okay. Okay, so it does not pass then on D.
D does not pass.
Correct, okay.
Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached board action items P through T.
Motion. Second.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please? Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Uh, yes to all, abstain on T.
Okay, um, Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, abstain on T.
Mr. Tufano?
Give me one second, I'm missing a page, that's why. Can you just read me what T is, because I don't have that one?
It's the H.
Okay, yes to all, abstain on T.
Okay, Ms. Warren?
Yes to all.
Ms. Belko?
Yes to all, abstain on T, uh, no on T.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no on T.
Um, Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all.
Ms. Beerman?
Yes to all, no on T.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
So, T does not pass.
That concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our Business Administrator's report, Ms. Allen? Okay, um, it is recommended that board action items for a ten-member vote, A through K, be approved by roll call.
Motion.
Second, are there any questions from Ms. Allen? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all.
Okay, Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Okay, so I say yes to all, but I have to recuse on the item related to myself on letter B and to letter J, related to myself.
B and J, okay.
Yeah, recuse.
Okay, um, Ms. Belko?
Yes to all.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes to all.
Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yes to all, but recuse on letter B as it pertains to D Ratner and Z Moraldo.
Okay, um, Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, but recuse on B, and I think it's part of J, where it pertains to me.
Okay, um, Ms. Beerman?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Board President's report. I wanted to begin by thanking our staff here this evening that are in the back, thank you for taking time each month to come to our meeting, it really shows the dedication and collaboration between the board and the district, and it's very much appreciated. I also want to thank our principals across the district for the tour that they provided to our new board members yesterday, it was so much appreciated to allow us to walk through and hear all the wonderful things going on in each school, it was also extremely beneficial, I believe, for our new board members to see each and every part of the four schools that are going to be impacted by the referendum, and how much it is needed to renovate and expand our schools now more than ever. I'd like to take a minute to thank my fellow board members this evening in recognition of New Jersey School Board Appreciation Month, the State Board of Education passed a resolution on January 11th recognizing all local school boards, I know we did get emails regarding this from New Jersey School Boards, so the resolution is in there, and basically takes the time to explain what school boards do and thank each and every one of us, so I want to thank you, my fellow board members, for everything that you do to provide a thorough and efficient education here in Monroe Township. I also want to acknowledge that February 6th through 10th is National School Counseling Week, we have our great school counselors throughout our district, and on behalf of the board, I want to thank them for all they do for our students across the district. We have seen reports about social emotional effects on COVID, that COVID has had on our students, and it is very important to recognize the need for our counselors in our schools and recognize all they do for our students. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our township officials, Mayor Jalina, Council President Cohen, and Councilwoman Van Derza for meeting with me, Mrs. Chanley and Ms. Beerman last week, they have agreed to allow the district to utilize township space and buildings throughout our community for referendum information to be distributed. It is this collaboration that allows the Board of Education to reach the greater community, to educate them about the needs of our district, and how much the success of our schools is really dependent on the success of the referendum, and which will be a success for the entire community. I've also reached out to our New Jersey School Board's representative, unfortunately, her calendar is pretty booked, and most school boards seem to, in Middlesex County, seem to have meetings on Wednesday night, so she's not able to make it to an upcoming Board of Education meeting, so we had discussed having a special meeting, looking at her calendar, it looked like March 29th worked for her for a special evening, for a special Board of Education evening that night, so if everyone on the board is okay with that date, I will work with our Board Secretary to schedule a special meeting for March 29th for the purpose of meeting our New Jersey School Board representative and discussing boardmanship and the role of a board member. And that concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is other board business. Ms. Beerman?
Thank you. January is Board Member Appreciation Month, board service has been a very interesting journey as well as a challenge, certainly, it is a different kind of service than many other volunteer opportunities, a bit removed from the tangible, positive, feel-good results. When I've volunteered in the past to help families that foster children, or work with food scarcity, or battered women, or homeless shelters, you can get very close to the results of your contribution, and feel that appreciation in your efforts, which makes you excited and motivated to give more. Mostly, school board service doesn't deliver in that regard. For me, in actuality, the prevailing lack of appreciation pretty much dissuades me. I do have a strong work ethic, I take my responsibilities seriously, and I do the work to make sure I'm fulfilling my obligations here. I hope that work is making a positive difference in various areas of children's education, staff experience, community understanding, and penetrating many other aspects of our little piece of this world. At the special meeting of January 12th, this was a special meeting for the board to perform time-sensitive mechanical tasks to approve the district to continue with the referendum process. This meeting was not a debate for the board on the merits or lack thereof concerning the referendum. Board members were provided with the agenda and very simple and mechanical items with ample time to ask questions and receive answers, as we all did, that were needed to determine their vote that evening. The public forum was fully honored by the chair, one resident had some questions, and they were addressed as much as possible at the time. It was clear when board members started speaking, they were going into the mode of not conducting the simple business of the board, but making speeches for YouTube fodder or future campaign materials, or worse yet, undermining the efforts of the district to progress the referendum.
Excuse me, we'll have order.
In all honesty, this was anticipated, and I had researched calling the question, and utilized an NJ SBA presentation on the fundamentals of school board membership, parliamentary procedure, which gave options for responding to this type of scenario. They simply list the motion for calling the question and describe it as stops debate on the main motion and calls for a vote. This may be a simplistic interpretation, and in the greater scheme of strict adherence to Robert's Rules of Order, there is likely a more complicated structure for how calling the question motion is administered. That meeting, we didn't have the typical support of a legal counsel, and no board member called a point of order to dispute the motion, the Board Secretary didn't identify it as an issue to address, the chair proceeded to move the vote. I didn't stay after the meeting or participate or witness anything that occurred. However, I would like to apologize if anyone felt I had done something with nefarious intent. I can assure you, I thought I was utilizing parliamentary procedure to help focus the board on the business of the board, which was a yes, no, abstain vote on the three resolutions, and deter them from using the forum to undermine the district administration efforts to progress the referendum. Likely, we would all benefit from a better understanding of parliamentary procedure, and I would like to suggest when we have the NJ SBA representative come work with us as a board, this be a topic of professional development. Much of the perceived stress over these meetings can be alleviated by all of us being knowledgeable about and adhering to the parliamentary procedures, which are in place to promote efficient and effective administration of the business of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Yes, first, I'd like to thank the, Ms. Chanley and her staff for putting together the long and a lot of walks day, seeing all the wonderful schools in this township, I mean, the principals were so welcoming, the staff was welcoming, in the lower grades, we saw a music teacher teaching children how to play the flute, um, we saw beautiful things through the schools, the one impression I had was the Rock Garden, I think at Carmen, was that Mill Lake?
Yes.
And Ms. Garcia was so wonderful to take a picture of the two of us, which I hate pictures, in front of the Rock Garden, but it's beautiful because my grandchildren like to do that and bring them to me also. So I just want to thank everybody, I know a lot of them have left, but it was a great day, it really was, to see how wonderfully kept these buildings are, from custodial up to the principal, A-plus to everybody. But I do need to say something, I do need to read something, and I need to read the following, for the sake of the whole Board of Education to start working together going forward. I would like to speak about the events that occurred at the last meeting on January 12th. I had and still have a concern about the referendum process that I wanted to address, but the board leadership refused to give me that chance. I am concerned about the timeliness and transparency of the date change from April to March. Most of the seniors in town are away in the winter, they usually leave after the holiday. I feel that they would not have all the information needed to make a decision on voting for the referendum. It has been said that presentations will be made in the senior communities, but for many seniors who go someplace warm in the winter, where I'd like to be, they will not have the chance to attend. I feel the seniors are being short-changed with regards to this. I've been a board member for about three weeks, but I have eighteen years' experience as a board member, in which we passed three successful referendums during my tenure in that district. It is because of my experience that I understand the value of including all stakeholders. Yet, after the meeting on January 12th, I was confronted by the board president in this very room, and told that I have no right to be a board member, member of the Board of Education, because I have no children in the district. She proceeded to say that I knew nothing about the referendum, and should not even have run for the Board of Education. I mentioned my concern about the seniors again, not getting information about the referendum to vote properly, and she replied, I don't care about the seniors. I was floored, okay, because it took me a long time to become a senior, and particularly since seniors make up about thirty-five to forty percent of our town's population. As a board, we have to approve the handling of HIBs in the district, but in this case, I felt I was being the one who was harassed, intimidated, and bullied by the board president in the way she approached me and spoke to me. This was not very professional or welcoming to a new board member, just like everyone else sitting at this table. I have the right to be here because I was elected to this position on November 8th. Ms. Skirby, you were way out of line the way you spoke to me that evening. These type of attacks cannot go on any longer. As elected officials, all of us, we should be held to a higher standard of our conduct and the way we respect each other, and if our board leader treats her fellow board members this way, we will not be able to work as a team for the children of Monroe Township. Educationally, that's why I ran for the board, I was on a board for eighteen years, and I cared for the children there, like I'm going to care for the children here. I have experience, and I'm willing to work hard, because I am retired, I can get involved in day-to-day things regarding the board, and I might not have any children in Monroe, but I have two grandchildren, one in second grade in Howell, and one in first grade in East Brunswick. I only hope that someone like me is on the Board of Education in those two districts, someone who cares about the children, and has a lot of experience even including referendums. I believe education should be a high priority in our town, so we can provide children with the tools they need for a successful future. If we're going to do this, we need to work together without prejudice and without harassment of our leader. The mission statement for this district, the Monroe Public Schools in collaboration with the members of the community, shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff, which we met all day yesterday, Mrs. Alvarez and I, in a safe and orderly environment, when those schools were safe and orderly. So beginning today, I request that we put aside our differences and work together in a respectful manner to do our job as we were elected to do. My last comment, I was at my grandson's, my six-year-old grandson's basketball game on Sunday, January 15th. It was fantastic to see him play, enjoyable, I mean, they're six-years and seven-year-olds, and you really have to laugh to yourself sometimes at what the antics they have, but across the room at the gym was a sign, and I wrote it down in a pad, "One team with the same dream." Let's all keep this in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to make a comment, as I know many of my fellow board members were here at the close of the last meeting, and what you described is not at all what took place, I'm not going to get into a debate with you about what was said back and forth, but I know my board members who were here, and certain members of the public who are here this evening as well, can attest that that is false of what you had said. And honestly, I really think it's a disservice to us as board members to bring our personal feelings for people here to the Board of Education, we are a board here, and we are supposed to be working for the betterment of the children, and I know you have for many years disparaged me and lied about me on social media, and I really thought when you took, excuse me, we will have order in this, or you will be asked to leave. I really thought that when you sat here at this board, it would be more for about what we are here as elected officials to do, and not completely disparaging another board member in public like that with lies. So with that, is there anybody else that has anything else to say?
Yeah, I have something I'd like to state.
Ms. Ratner?
Uh, so first of all, I did want to say I had the opportunity to attend the middle school jazz and percussion ensemble concert, there were six different groups that performed, all the students and staff did a great job. I also did have the pleasure of attending the sixth-grade musical, it was great to see these students, my daughter being one of them, and I've watched several of them grow since kindergarten, some of them just come out of their shells and collaborate in three weeks rehearsals, it was only three weeks of rehearsals, and they put on an amazing performance, so kudos to the staff and the students that were involved. The second thing is, as the NJ SBA delegate, I did send an email to board members, just about any potential resolutions you may want to see brought up at the delegate assembly, perhaps this is something we can look at further at the Legislative Action Committee, and then bring, because it's due at a certain date in order to be put on the agenda, so if there's any interest, let me know. In May, I had made a speech in other board business about how our board and our town is divided, and if we could come together, we could achieve a lot more. And then even this month, at our reorganization meeting, I said to the entire board that we need to utilize the strengths of each other and work together. Yet, at the meeting on January 12th, I was completely shut out of board deliberation with the motion made by the Vice President, someone who had complimented Ms. Arminio in the 2020 campaign for asking a lot of questions at public meetings, so that public could be aware of this information, which was a comment that I fully agreed with. I had raised my hands earlier in the board deliberation, but another board member was called upon, which is completely fine, all board members have the right for that, but once I stated that I still had comments, it was disrespectful to be refused. The Code of Ethics, letter D, states, "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run." There are many times when I do email questions before a meeting, and in fact, this was one of these cases, as I had asked several questions, that were then shared with the full board. But there are also times when either additional information becomes present, and times when more questions arise, such was the case on January 12th. To be clear, my intent was never to attack the referendum plan, as was said on social media. I am not a puppet of the Democratic Party, as was said on social media. To be frank, while I believe the board should be completely nonpartisan, and a party affiliation shouldn't matter, I am registered as an independent, and there have been times where I have voted for Democrats, there have been times when I voted for independents, and there's times when I voted for Republicans. While, to be clear, I did vote no on the referendum vote, along with two other board members in February of 2020. Members, in February of 2022, I am very well aware that once the majority of the Board approves this, my role as a Board Member is to follow suit, which is why I voted yes in September, when we were voting on sending the proposal to the state. My questions for that night were not to start attacking the referendum plan, but based on information we had received a few days before the vote. One was that when we had our resolution that we voted on in September, it said, "The Board of Education hereby authorizes the architect to submit to the DOE for approval school facilities project applications for the following projects. Letter A, the construction of additions with alterations to the Monroe Township High School; letter B, construction of an addition with alterations to the Monroe Township Middle School; and letter C, construction of an addition with renovations to the Applegarth Elementary School." These were listed as three separate projects on that resolution, and so, as a Board, to my knowledge, we never discussed the wording or layout of the ballot question. I did confirm this with two other current Board Members who were also on the Board last year. While I'm well aware of the needs at all three schools, and I'm well aware that we need additional space for our students, there has been public feedback that have shown some may vote no to the entire project if Applegarth was included. Therefore, my question was going to be, based on the application we were submitting, was there any modifications that could be made to that resolution? And the only other question I had planned was to say that, in the third one, it says that we, as the Board, agree not to appeal the initial decision by the state in regards to the amount of funding we'd get. As a Board Member, all I have seen as far as documentation from the state was that letter with the numeric amounts, as well as a simple checklist that we voted on in our special meeting. As elected officials, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers to try and save as much money as possible. And so my question was, assuming that any correspondence with the state would have been shared with the Board, and these were the only letters we had received, why we were not appealing this initial decision, which provided zero dollars for both the middle school and high school, and if there was a way to revise things so that we may get additional funding from the state, which we all know has been a long problem? In addition, I don't use social media to make my decisions as a Board Member. Quite frankly, I use it to share pictures of my kids with family and friends and for occasional recommendations by fellow community members. However, I was sent an article of a direct quote by Ms. Chanley that concerned me in a newsletter, and I did just want, newspaper, I just want to get clarification. It said, "It's my understanding that if the referendum were to fail, we would immediately go out for a referendum again, and then we would seek counsel to find out exactly what takes place if the referendum were to fail again." I wanted to know why, if the referendum fails, we would not seek input from the public, from the people who are paying for this referendum and the people who voted it down before putting it out again. Wouldn't we also need to vote as a Board before automatically putting this out again? In transparency, I don't know if this was an error by the writer of that article with an incorrect quote, but I did want clarification in regards to that, should the plan not pass. And then finally, I did just want to confirm that mail-in ballots would be an allowed method for voting for the referendum. I was told at one point that we believed they were, but a senior in our community had told me they were told by a state employee it's not allowed for special elections, and so I did say I would just get clarification because I believed it was allowed. And to that note, I also wanted to see if, for those snowbirds who may not be here, perhaps there can be a live virtual presentation, because they would not be able to attend any of those presentations that would be at their community centers. Thank you.
Do you, anybody have anything else? I have something.
Ms. Alvarez? Sure. I have to put my glasses, my eyes are getting tired. Okay, first and foremost, I wanted to also thank the Principals and the Vice Principals for taking the time. Sure. I said, "First and foremost, I would like to thank the following Principals and Vice Principals for taking the time to show us their school buildings and for answering all our questions. Mrs. Graziano, Ms. Dinmore, Mrs. Ackerman-Garcia, and Ms. Fedora, Dr. James Higgins, and Mrs. Smith, Dr. Kevin Higgins, thank you for all your hard work and all you do. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to visit Brookside and Barkley Brook. However, we plan to do so at a later date." I want to thank Ms. Gerby for taking my suggestions that we should spotlight some of our support staff during the relevant month. So I wanted to take this time to focus on our district Guidance Counselors, our SAC Counselor, and our school psychologists in honor of National School Counseling Week, which takes place this year from February 6th through the 10th. These individuals work diligently every day to meet the social and emotional needs of our students. Our elementary-level Guidance Counselors provide social-emotional lessons to kids. They manage 504 plans. They run the Intervention and Referral Services Committee, monitor intervention plans, participate in HIB investigations, and hold counseling groups throughout the day. Currently, our elementary schools have one Guidance Counselor per building, so as you can imagine, they are very busy. Along with addressing the emotional needs of our high schoolers, our high school-level Guidance Counselors assist students with selecting classes, and they help students plan for their future goals post-graduation. They also manage state college entry testing and participate in HIB investigations, et cetera. Our school psychologists are not only responsible for identifying, testing, and monitoring our special-needs population, but they often work hand-in-hand with building administration when their expertise is needed. If any of these individuals are here tonight or are watching from home, we thank you for all you do for our children. And Ms. Bierman, I want to thank you for your comments. I was given the opportunity to ask questions before they were answered and before the vote. My only concern, and I shared it with the Board Leadership, was that when I wasn't allowed to explain my vote, I had to deal with a confrontation from a member of the public. So I think I expressed my concerns regarding that, and I think, based on today's meeting, I think we're moving in the right direction with allowing us to speak and share our point of views to prevent this in the future.
Thank you. And just as a point of clarity, any Board Member here, at any time during a motion, can call the vote. So that is something that we should be cognizant of. Board Members, that we do have point of orders, we do have, there are things that can be called.
I believe the proper term is called a question, not called a vote. So that was, and we didn't have counsel that day, but that is my understanding.
Mr. Disler, did you want to?
So, obviously, we're running at the meeting, so I don't know exactly what took place. So, any member can call to end the debate. Any member can call the vote, and then you move normally through Roberts Rules, through that, whatever that process is. And exactly what took place at that last meeting, I can't specifically comment, and I wasn't there, so I apologize for that.
But that is something that we should be cognizant of, that that can happen. Is there anybody, Ms. Belko?
Yes, first, I just want to say that this is a business meeting, and we should be conducting business, and I, in the spirit of being collaborative and being, working together, I would expect that all of my Board Members, fellow Board Members, come prepared, and that's why we get the materials so far in advance, so that we can have our discussions and try to avoid so, you know, very long. It's now already 10:15, which is actually kind of early for us, but we have been very good at trying to move things along. So I just would ask that everybody be prepared and, you know, have their questions answered, and, you know, let's keep the fodder back and forth to a, you know, to a minimum, because we all have, you know, we need to move this stuff along. As far as the referendum goes, you know, we have had March referendums in the past. I believe the last referendum was moved from November to March, and I won't get into what I've been told is why, so that, but it was moved from November to March. So there have been, there's been a precedent in this town for March referendums. The people who decide to go south for the winter, that's a choice that they make, and what happens in our town while they're gone, they made that choice to leave. And I don't think that, at this juncture, we can afford to wait until November or September to have a vote and move forward with this referendum. We have been kicking this can down the road since 2018. It was the Board in 2020 that decided to not worry about the referendum because we were in the middle of COVID. I get that. But then, as things settled down, nothing moved forward until we moved forward with our votes, which was 2021, and I believe it was Ms. Arminio who got us on the run to get that going and move forward with that. So this has been two years of work and two years of going through plans and looking at things, and I'd like to ask my fellow Board Members to respect that, and if you want to go back and look at the Board of Education Committee meetings, that would probably give you a good, solid background, especially BG&amp;T Committee, as well as some of the meetings that we, you know, the regular Board meetings. One of the things I want to say is, page 36, Roberts Rules of Order, which is the version that we use, page 36, the proper wording to close debate on the immediately pending motion is to say, "I move the previous question." However, if you read a few words down, frequently, however, the motion is made in a non-standard form by the member saying, "I call the question," or "I move, we vote now." So there are several ways to close debate and to have the questions due. As you all know, I don't come without this book, and I'm usually the one who says, "Let's call the question." And I was getting pretty close to that myself at the last meeting. The last thing that I'd like to say to all my fellow Board Members is, delete your Facebook accounts, stay off of Facebook and social media, and stop listening to the liars and the people who are out there telling untruths and acting like teenagers and people that we actually have to sit and decide on for harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases that go on in the high school. Let's everybody grow up, act like adults, and stop responding and talking to each other on Facebook. It just isn't worth it.
Thank you, Ms. Belko. Anybody else? Ms. Fabiano?
So I just want to start off by saying that I attended the Woodland Advanced Band Concert on January 10th. Can you hear me? And I'd like to congratulate the students and staff in their performance. It was a wonderful evening, and everyone worked very hard to make this performance happen, and I'm looking forward to their next performance in the spring. I'd also like to address, like my fellow Board Members did, the special meeting on January 12th. While some may think we had ample time to review the materials, it was two days that we had, and some information we weren't receiving until only a couple of hours before. I did my best, but still had some things that I just wanted some clarity on. However, it is our responsibility as a Board to be transparent and have discussions regarding issues surrounding our district in public. It's the public's right to hear our deliberations and understand what our thoughts and concerns may be. At our last meeting, several of my Board colleagues and I were cut off and were not given the opportunity to ask our questions or express our concerns. Like everyone here at this table, I am a Board Member, and we were all elected by the people of Monroe to discuss and deliberate with all of you up here the things that impact our children and schools. The public can see, and I think we can all feel, that unfortunately, we are divided. We should be all be working towards the same goal, what's best for our children, but countless hours have been spent on attacks on social media, ethics complaints, and slanderous emails. For the sake of our community and our children, we need to put aside our differences and focus on the children first. The campaign slogan that I ran on with my fellow Board Members here was to unite the community, and in order to do that, the Board must unite first. We must all treat each other with respect and decency and move forward to help our district reach its goals.
Does anybody have anything else? Seeing none, all right. The next item on our agenda is our public forum. If anybody wishing to speak, come to the podium, you have four minutes. State your name and your municipality. Good evening.
Pradeep Malam, 4J Place, Monroe Township. I have one comment regarding the senior vote. So, any special election that happens in NJ, or any election that happens in NJ are eligible for mail-in notes. So this is the confirmation from the county clerk in the New Brunswick or not Brunswick, that I received an email. That is my first comment, and it's already been clarified. The second comment, I appreciate all you are doing, volunteer hours, endless, countless hours that you are spending before the meeting, during the meeting, and after the meeting. We really appreciate, and I really appreciate what you're doing for me. And everybody on that board, on the table, everybody in the seats in the table, if you want our votes, if you want our applause, applauses, we are okay to give you because we elected you. But when you retract from your statement, you can't take the heat from the public, and you want to be, and public needs to go through their spouses to talk to you or to why you retract this particular statement, then probably that seat is not for you. That's it. If you really want to be in the shell of your spouse, and we need to go through your spouses, and the spouses are threatening the public that you cannot talk to my spouse, yeah, then you cannot ask for votes from the public. Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, 19, Patricia Place. I find that real, I find that real hard to understand because, see, Mr. Malam represents MICA, who thinks they control members of the Board here, and at the Women's Leagues of Women Voters, Mr. Prakash went up to a candidate running for the Board saying, "If you do what we say, if you do what we say..."
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Mr. Malam.
"If you do what we say, we'll give you our votes. If you do what we want you to do, we'll get you the support." So to come up here and say, you know, come up with fallacies, he should really be thinking about how he approaches people. But anyhow, I'll get down to my referendum questions. I'm going to ask one question at a time, since apparently that's the way I have to do it, and you've allowed others to do it. What is the plan with the trailers that are going to house the kids behind the middle school while the refer, should the referendum pass while the construction's happening? The trailers behind the school? How, you're going to do, you're going to move the, when the, the middle school, right? When they do the construction, they're going to move the trailers from the front of the school to the back of the school while the construction is taking place?
No.
He's saying?
He said yes.
The trailer that is in the front parking lot will move to the rear parking lot that the Board previously authorized the design to be done on.
In the back body, yes.
Okay, how will the plumbing be run to the build, to the trailer in the back, given that there's no plumbing hookup back there, sort?
If you could list all of your questions first, please.
Okay, how will security work when kids move from the trailer to inside the building? Now it's in the front, usually, my understanding, a security officer comes from the trailer, from the building, to escort kids if they have to go into the building, the nurse's office, et cetera. How is that movement going to take place?
Do you have additional questions?
Are you writing them down? Because I have a lot.
Go ahead.
Okay. If the trailers are going to be moved to the back of the, of the middle school, where the parents are doing drop-off right now, how is that going to affect the drop-off?
Do you have additional questions?
Where are the workers? Mr. Tufano said, "We don't have parking as it is." Where are the workers going to park their cars? Could be over a hundred workers on site at a time. Where are they going to park their cars? You can start there.
Do you have any further questions?
You can start there. Those are my questions.
Those are your questions, and...
And I have two minutes left. Go ahead.
And thank you very much for your comments. We will take those questions back. The administration will work on answers for those, and we will have those loaded up to the website.
Okay, so let me go to my next question. The question for the business administrator. You said at the last meeting...
Excuse me, you asked the question through the chair.
Okay, the business administrator said at the last meeting that this referendum will cost taxpayers 27 years, but that the impact won't be felt because other things will be falling off the budget. Can you clarify what that means?
Do you have any other questions?
That's a question I have right now. So no answer to that. Okay, we'll go to another question. Where is the money going to come from the operating budget? We said we, right now, are looking at potentially cutting programs because we don't have money. If the referendum doesn't, if the referendum fails, which it will likely do, how are we going to pay for the roof and the other repairs that are necessity, that are necessary No answers to that. I guess the public can really see what's going on here.
As I stated, we will take your questions.
What is the true cost of the referendum? Does the taxpayer impact, is it after, before, or after the state aid? And how is that state aid affected over the 27-year period if there are any changes in state legislation? Would we potentially lose that, would the taxpayer go up? Again, referendum. Will there be a vote by mail? I think a Board Member answered, asked that question, but I don't see, what is the answer to that? Yes or no? What is the cost of the referendum having it in March versus November? It's my understanding that the taxpayers will have to pay about $100,000 to... It's my understanding that the taxpayers will have to pay about $100,000 to have it in March, but it would be free in November since it correlates with a, you know, another refer, another election that's happening. So what is the cost to have the referendum regardless of if it passes or not? And who pays that cost? What budget does that come out of? Okay.
No, your, the time continues to run, please don't stop.
Okay, so I'll wait for your answers now.
Thank you for your comments. Like I said, we have all the questions. We will work with the administration.
Can you repeat them back to me to make sure you have them right, so I can get my answers?
We will work with the administration, and we will get answers to those questions, and that's something that we could add, a lot of that to our FAQs. Thank you very much.
So can you make sure you have, can you read them back to me, what I gave you?
No, Mr. Fabiano, do you have anything else to say?
Okay, let me summarize them again for you then. You want to hear them again?
If you can do it in nine seconds, sure.
Oh, I can do it in nine seconds.
Hello again, it's Doug Poit. I live here in Monroe. I'm going to be changing the topic. The administration and some members of our board are in the midst of negotiating the next teacher's contract. In light of this very important function, I offer the following scenario in which the data will be accurate. Susan is a student who will be graduating with honors from the College of New Jersey. She has prepared to enter teaching. Her professors have been impressed with her seemingly innate talent for working with students and helping them master content. She lives in a community in southern Middlesex County and would prefer to work in a district in this area. She did some research online prior to submitting applications for her first teaching position. Here is what she found. For the current school year 2022-23, the starting salary in South Brunswick is $60,000. In North Brunswick, it's over $58,000. In East Brunswick, it's over $57,000. And in Freehold Township, it is just under $55,000. But she found that in Monroe, it is $52,262. She did further research on the average salaries for 2021-22, as found in the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending. She found that the median salary in South Brunswick is $88,660. In East Brunswick, it is $75,525. In North Brunswick, it is $75,387. And in Freehold Township, it is $72,297. But in Monroe, it is $70,497. Clearly, Susan has decided not to apply to Monroe. In fact, she found that someone starting work in Monroe in 2018 would now be making this year $54,962, five dollars more than the current starting salary in Freehold Township, and $5,038 less than the starting salary in South Brunswick. This is a travesty. For some time in the past, our boards have allowed the negotiating teams for the teachers to set the salary guide, as long as the total increase fell within a certain percent. If this is allowed to continue, our district will never be competitive with other nearby districts. Is Monroe attracting the best candidates to fill teaching positions? I leave you to answer that question as you continue to negotiate the next contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poit. And one comment I just want to make about that. The contract is a three-year contract, so we are negotiating this year in anticipation of the contract end date in June 30th. And we are very hopeful, as a negotiating team and as a board, that we will have a contract negotiated by that. It is not the intention of the negotiating team or the board to go into any type of, our teachers working without a contract. I think we all value them, and I think we are working diligently with our negotiating team to ensure that we do attract the most quality teachers to our district and retain them as well, because we do have, and I've said it all the time, we, our teachers are second to none. We have fantastic staff here working in our district, and I couldn't agree with you more that we need to give them a fair contract. So thank you. Good evening.
Shell Arminio, Monroe Township. On, on the contract notes, on tonight's agenda, the board action item O, it's a approval of a previously submitted sideboard agreement between Monroe Township Board of Education and the Monroe Township School Administrators Association. Is that just a sideboard agreement? And has the memorandum of agreement been finalized between the Monroe Township Board of Education and the School Administrators Association?
Yes. We ratified that tonight.
That's a ratification on O? Where, I, I missed it.
No, came out of a closed meeting.
When we came out of a closed session, there was a resolution to ratify the contract.
Oh, when you came out of a closed session? Okay, so it wasn't on the agenda?
No, we came out of a closed session. We had a discussion.
Got it.
We came out and read a resolution.
Okay, so now that?
And if you have a list of questions, if you could just?
I don't.
Okay.
It's a follow-up question to that. If you have, if that has been ratified, then that can go on board docs for the public to see, because contracts, once they are fulfilled, they can be publicized. Is that correct? And will that, and when will that be available?
We just approved that this evening, and the administration will follow the procedure and protocol that they do for uploading contracts for the public.
Okay, because if a contract is available, it is, like in other words, it should be available tomorrow to the public, because it's one of the, in the Open Public Meetings Act, in the Open Public Records Act, I believe it should be available upon request. Is that correct? You might want to ask the attorney.
It is available upon request, yes, absolutely. You asked when it would be available on a website or electronically. I said the administration will work to get it up to their policy and procedure as soon as possible. If you send a request in, that gets fulfilled, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I don't, I don't even know if you need a Open Public Me, Open Public Records Act request. I think you could just request it, and it can be provided via email.
Can we get a response from the council, please?
Sure. Mr. Disler?
Because a memorandum of agreement is signed, that does not mean that the contract is completely finalized, done, and available to the public, right? It's just the parties have agreed on the terms, now the parties now have to go and put together the contract. And so the way, the way I'm, the way I'm interpreting your question is, will the contract be available tomorrow? I assume it will not be, because the contract itself still needs to be prepared and signed by the parties.
But the memorandum of agreement, then, is not a public document yet?
Just the memorandum of agreement?
Yes.
That's an interesting question.
Thank you.
Because most negotiation documents are not, but certainly the final contract is. I'd have to look at, certainly when the contract is finalized as it is, I just don't know prior to the contract being finalized whether it is.
Well, if it's, if it's an agreed-upon, I mean, I, I don't really know the answer to that question either, but I believe that if it's signed by both parties and it's that memorandum of agreement is finished, then it should be available to the public as an open, as an open public record.
So there's the, the reason I'm back and forth is there's the negotiations exception, and I don't want to have this debate back and forth with you, but there's negotiations exception under.
All right, so I can, I can maybe next week or the end of this week, call the administration and find out if it's available.
Sure.
Okay. I would like to make a comment. I have heard over the years that when people have no children in school, there have been disparaging remarks about their ability to make, their ability to participate in Board of Education issues. Let me remind all of us that while people may not have children in the school system, they pay the taxes just like everybody else. And this is a democracy where we, we, as a community, have decided it is our social and community and cultural best interest that we participate in the education of our children in the public school system. So what that means is, if there, anyone, whether they have children in the school system or not, if they reside in Monroe, they pay their taxes. And even people who object to sometimes things that the Board of Education does or the costs of the Board of Education, they pay their taxes anyway. So please be respectful of the residents of Monroe who every month pay their taxes, whether they have children in the school or not. I, for one, believe that it is a community responsibility, whether you have children in the school or not, to support the educational system of our children. But I also believe that the narrative suggests that anyone on the school board and anybody in the community who feels that people don't have a right to their opinion or their position or their questions to the school board or this administration, because they don't have children in the school, I think that's shameful. And we should not, and that should never come up again. I have been in this community since 1980, and it's come up over the years, and it should never come up again. Next, I was not here on the 12th. Unfortunately, my husband was in the hospital again, and I was caring for him. But I have seen over the years by different administrations, not just, not currently, not necessarily currently, but over, that there are times when the, and I, and I believe Vice President Bierman said it, it wasn't supposed to be a deterrence when you called it, when you called it. All right, I'll have to come back.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio.
Yes, thank you.
And I would just, I would just like to say, on behalf of the Board of Education, nobody here on this board or this Board of Education has taken the position that we do not value every resident in Monroe Township, and that we do not give everybody a voice here. So I'd just like to make that, the Board of Education does recognize all of our residents as equals here, whether they do have children or they do not.
Peter Piro, North Disbro Hill Road, Monroe Township. I'd just like to make some suggestions related to security at the middle school. So when they put the trailers at the middle school, there was deep thought about children crossing and security and everything else. Last week, I was driving by the middle school, and I observed a young man come out of the trailer. Buses were lined up in front of the school. There's two sidewalks, the one we used for crossing and the one to the pack. I watched, there was no security person out there. The child walked, a car pulled in, stopped, and the child walked between the car, the buses, by the pack to get in the school. I immediately called somebody and was informed that they changed the crosswalk. And I asked, "Would you be?" They're like, "We now cross the kids by the pack." Anybody knows that it's very close to the road. We had this discussion when the trailers were going there, and now they're crossing the students by the pack. All you need is a car to lose a little bit of control in private road, come into the parking lot. It's 40 feet probably between the crosswalks, but it could save probably 100 kids' lives. Also, I noticed the top of the lot by the cage field, now there's buses lined up picking up kids. There used to be a security guard at the top of the corner by the buses every day to watch the kids at the top buses. I observe now, there's nobody from security there, I think maybe a teacher. And kids are walking between parked cars to enter buses by the cage field. Not only are they entering the buses, but everybody who's a police officer knows, there's D and T specifications for buses, driving, entrance, egress, exits, and you're supposed to use the main entrance and exits, exit school. I think it's a disaster, the buses trying to plot by the football field, the cage field, because it's very tight, and there's not enough room for them to really turn and make a view of what's going on. So I would just like maybe somebody to look into that and maybe correct it if it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. We do not have a need to go into the closed session, so at this time, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on February 15th, 2023. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.